Committee on Dangerous Drugs, the meeting is now called to order. On behalf of the Committee on Public Order and Safety, this Quad Committee is now...
Resume, diba?
Is now resumed.
For the Committee on Human Rights, this committee is now resumed.
For the Committee on Public Accounts, the hearing is now called to order.
Thank you. Comsec kindly lead the prayer for our committee hearing for today.
Let us all please rise and place ourselves in the presence of God. Lord God Almighty, thank you for this auspicious day. Thank you for gathering us once more in this whole aptly called people's center. It is raining and we are thankful. We offer, however, this prayer for your people who are wary and concerned that the rains will cause them pain and suffering. We pray that you ease their burden. We pray for each one present today. Ease each one's worry, whatever they may be. We pray for our leaders so they may be guided by your wisdom and will. We pray for our resource persons that they find in their hearts and minds the sanctity of their oath that they professed in this public hearing to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Above all, we pray for our country and your people. May we all find peace in this land and peace within our hearts and minds. All this we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Please remain standing for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, pero sa ang silang anan. Alang ng puso sa bibigay mo'y buhay. Lupang hiniram, buyan ka ng magiliw. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok sa simoy at sa langit ng pagka. Kay ilang ang tula at awit sa paglayang nilawahan. Ang isap ng wakawat mo'y kagumpay na rapihikin. Ang pituming na paraw niya kaylan, pangpali matinili. Luban ang maraw ng warangit pagsipka. Uyay langit sa pilipin. Aming likaya napak may mahapit at mahatay ng daril sayo.
The next agenda for today's committee hearing is the roll call of the members present in these proceedings.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Congressman Akop.
May I respectfully move that we dispense with the calling of the roll. So move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion.
Second emotion.
To dispense with the calling of the roll, duly seconded. Are there any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Next in the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting held last August 28, 2024. Is there any motion?
Mr. Chair.
Congressman Akop.
May I respectfully move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last hearing and consider it as approved. So move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the meeting held last August 28, 2024 and for the approval of the same, duly seconded. Are there any objections? Hearing none. The motion is carried. Before we proceed with the committee hearing proper, please allow the chair to deliver his opening remarks. Magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. Good morning to our senior deputy speaker Dong Gonzalez, the head of the Task Force QuadCom, the honorable co-chairman of the four standing committees, esteemed colleagues, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here today as we continue this crucial and profoundly significant investigation. Our focus remains on unraveling the web of extrajudicial killings, the collusion between a well-organized syndicate and government officials in the drug trade, and the criminal activities linked to POGOs. In our previous hearings, serious allegations came to light. Witnesses claimed that former President Rodrigo Rova Duterte was directly involved in the execution of Chinese drug personalities while they were detained in Davao. According to these testimonies, these executions were allegedly carried out in exchange for money and promises of release from imprisonment. Such accusations, if proven true, reveal a systematic abuse of power and a deliberate elimination of individuals for financial gain, all under the pretext of maintaining public order. Additionally, witness Mr. Jimmy Guban provided further incriminating information detailing drug shipments that were allegedly facilitated by government officials with close ties to Mr. Michael Young, a figure widely suspected of being a key player in the drug trade. Our investigation has also scrutinized the suspicious accumulation of wealth by certain individuals seemingly tied to the illegal operations of POGOs. Evidence suggests that the Chinese crime syndicates have employed Filipino dummies to establish shell corporations designed to conceal profits generated from illegal activities. This elaborate scheme not only undermines our financial systems, but also poses a serious threat to national security by enabling large-scale money laundering and other criminal enterprises within our borders. Today's session will continue to peel back the layers of this criminal network as we piece together the connections between these individuals, organizations, and public officials involved. Our goal is to uncover the full extent of these operations, expose those responsible, and hold them accountable. We are committed to fulfilling our duty to the Filipino people by seeking justice and preserving the integrity of our government institutions. Again, magandang umaga po sa ating lahat, sa ating mga kasamahan sa mababang kapulungan, sa ating former president Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, our senior deputy speaker Dong Gonzalez, and to all our resource persons, magandang umaga and maraming salamat. We now recognize the chair of the Committee on Public Order and Safety, Congressman Don Fernandez. You are recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. To my co-chairs, our esteemed colleagues, former president Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, senior deputy speaker Dong Gonzalez, kunsaan nagsimula ang lahat ng ito through his resolution. Resource persons and guests, magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. By now, there can be no doubt in anyone's mind that powerful people are behind this large-scale, multi-billion peso criminal enterprise involving drug trafficking, POGOs, and extrajudicial killings. The fact that several key personalities of Pogo corporations have managed to evade the long arm of the law speaks volumes of the power they wield and the resources at their disposal. Our findings have firmly established that Chinese nationals obtained Filipino citizenship by fraudulent means, then proceeded to acquire vast land holdings through businesses disguised as Filipino-owned corporations. In the course of our inquiry, I believe that one thing will eventually be made clear: that drug money is the source of Pogo money and that Pogo money is a source of criminal activities, including EJKs. Sa araw na ito, nais kumbigandiin ang tatlong punto ukol sa ating investigasyon sa mga ilegal na Pogo. Una, ang importansya ng testimonia ni Cassandra Leong at iba pang mga resource persons na maaring makapagbigay ng impormasyon ukol sa mga makapangyarihang tao na nasa likod ng operasyon ng ilegal na Pogo. Nitong nakaraang hearing, ay nakita natin na nagdadalawang isip si Cassandra Leong na ibahagi ang totoong ginagampalan niya bilang authorized representative ng Lucky South 99. Hindi rin siya handa upang pangalanan ang mga boss o pinanser ng may ilegal Pogo operations. Tinyanggian niya ang pagkakatoon na ibinigay ng Quadcom na magkaroon ng isang executive session. Sa umpisa, ay pumayag siya na mag-execute ng bank waiver. Ngunit totoo ay kanyang binawi dahil sa alang-alang niya na ito ay magsisilbing ebidensya laban sa kanya sa kasong money laundering na inehain ang paok at amlak. Being the beneficial owner of 58% of the shares of Whirlwind Corporation and the trusted translator of Whirlwind director, Duan Ren Wu, it stands to reason that she has the sufficient knowledge about the affairs of the two companies. As per the testimony of Lucky South 99 Incorporated's Ronalin Baterna and Stephanie Mascarenas, we have seen that Chinese nationals have assigned them as officers of the Pogo corporations and even made it appear that they have invested millions as paid-up capital in order to give semblance of the Filipino ownership of the Pogo corporations. Ang ikalawang punto ay ang paglaganap ng mga ilegal na Pogo sa ating bansa. Noong August 31, 2024, nagkaroon ng raids sa ilegal Pogo Hub sa Lapu-Lapu City, Cebu. Ang Pogo na ito ay nag-ooperate ng romance at cryptocurrency scams sa loob ng Tourist Garden Hotel sa Barangay Agus. Mula sa porasyong ito, ay may nahuling mga 160-plus na Indonesians, Chinese, at Burmese nationals. Sinasabi ng paok na ang mga boss sa operasyon na ito ay maaring nanggaling sa Pogo Hub sa Porak Pampanga na nakatakas noong raid sa Lucky South 99 kailan lamang. Sa pangyayaring ito, ating makikita na mataas ang posibilidad ng paglaganap ng mga ilegal na Pogo sa kabila ng ban na inutos ng ating pangulo. Ang mga Pogo operators ay nakapaglabas na ng bilyong-bilyong piso para sa pagtakbo ng kanilang negosyo sa ating bansa. Nakita natin na gagawin nila ang lahat, legal man o ilegal, upang mabawi ang kanilang inilabas na pondo. Well-pounded sila, at nakita natin na kaya-kaya nilang lusutan ang ating mga otoridad. Ikatlong punto ay ang koneksyon ng Pogo sa makapangyarihang tao tulad ni Hong Jang Yang. Si Hong Jang Yang ay kapatid ni Michael Yang na naging presidential economic advisor ng dating Pangulong Duterte. Si Hong Jang Yang ay may kaugnayan kay Alice Go o Gong Waping at Yu Sheng Kan ng Pogo operator ng Hongsheng Gaming Technology. May kaugnayan din siya sa isang nagnangalang Gerald T. Cruz ng Brick Hearts Technology, isang Pogo service provider. These links alone do not mean that they are involved in illegal activities and that is the reason why, at the proper time, I shall seek a motion to invite several key personalities to the succeeding hearings and it will be up to them whether to use the opportunity to air their side of the issue. And finally, ang kakulangan ng mga kasalukuyang batas na pinaiiral ng ating pamahalaan ay kailangan ng masusugan sa lalong madaling panahon upang sa ganon ay maiwasan na ang mga pangyayaring sinasamantala ng mga mapangabuso nating mamamayan, nasa gobyerno man o wala, Filipino man o banyaga. Hindi natin maisasantabi ang mga pangyayaring naganap. Sa nakaraang administrasyon, ay patuloy nating nararamdaman sa kasalukuyang panahon. Akusahan man tayo na ang lahat ng ating ginagawa sa mga komiting ito, mula noon hanggang ngayon, at pag-iimbestiga ng iba't ibang personalidad na natutukoy ng ebidensya at pangyayari ay may bahid politika. Be that as it may, this Quad Committee will not stop. We will not even blink. We will not be affected. The resolve as mandated to us to achieve is far from over. As evidences continue to flow and being verified together by all of us in such a way transparency and honesty are always being observed. Dangerous as it might be, we, as a public official, mandated by the Constitution to uphold the law at all times must face the outcome and consequences of this investigation. Pagbantaan niyo man kami, siraan man kaming lahat mula ulo hanggang pa. Gumamit man ng mga tao upang mabago ang takbo at kalalabasan ng investigasyon. Isa lamang ang nagsusimigaw na katotohanan. Kailan man, ang ebidensya ay hindi magsisinungaling. Tamaan na ang tamaan, masaktan na masaktan. We will continue on this investigation and collate all the pieces of evidences linking different elements together with corroborating statements from resource persons to come out with a law that will give way to a better place to live for you and for me and for the future generation. Minsan lang tayong dadaan sa mundong ito at sa ating pagdaan, gawin na natin ang tama. Dahil sa tama, kailan man, we will never go wrong. Marami salamat po, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Congressman Don Fernandez. The next to deliver his opening remarks is our co-chair, Congressman Joseph Stephen Caraps Padwano. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the interest of time, Mr. Chairman, I'd rather submit my opening remarks to the Comsec for record purposes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's noted. Comsec, please take note of that. The next to deliver his opening remarks is another co-chair, the chairman of the Committee on Human Rights, Congressman Benny Abante. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kala ko si Congressman Don lang ang magibigay ng opening remarks. Any rate, to my fellow co-chairs and colleagues in the Quad Committee, our resource persons and guests, ang mga colleagues ko po dito, pinabati ko rin pong ating former president, GMA. Magandang umaga po sa inyo lahat. In the Book of Proverbs, Chapter 6, Verse 27 and 28, we are asked, "Can a man take fire in his bosom and his clothes not be burned? Can one go upon hot coals and his feet not be burned?" In our last three hearings, we have answered this question. A testimony we have heard clearly illustrate the interconnectedness of wrongdoing, domino effects of sins, of how evil begets evil. Kaya akma po na ang magiging focus ng ating hearing ngayon ay Pogo. Dahil dati, maraming nagsabi na hindi naman ito nakakasama. The gamblers are not Filipinos. Hindi maoko abayan natin ano kukurap. But as we have discovered, this is simply not true. We have learned that the impact of gambling does not stop with the individual gambler. The money earned from POGOs, we have learned, supports and leads to other forms of wrongdoing: fraud, prostitution, money laundering, corruption, even torture and kidnapping. Hindi lamang yan, may testigo tayo. Si Lieutenant Colonel Jovi Espinido, who informed us that drug money was used to fund the quota system in the previous administration's war on drugs that resulted in thousands of deaths. Blinded by profit, for the love of money is the root of all evil, those who were expected to uphold human rights ignored due process and committed injustices in the name of justice. After all that we have learned this Quad Committee, can anyone now say with a straight face that gambling is a harmless vice? Sanapo, in the course of our hearings, we can all finally open our eyes to the fact that the evil of gambling extends far beyond personal sin. It is a societal evil, one that can corrupt our country and destroy lives. This interconnectedness of sin is why it is crucial for us to push forward in our hearings. We must recognize that even small acts of wrongdoing can have far-reaching consequences. Sin begets sin, just as a single stone dropped into a pond creates ripos that spread far and wide. We cannot fool ourselves into thinking that these small illicit actions do not matter. My friends, we must recognize that we can only counter the seeds of sin by sowing the seeds of righteousness. I urge all our participants, all our resource persons, choose honesty over deceit, right over wrong, life over death by doing so. So we not only keep our nation from falling into the trap of sin, but we also create a ripple effect of goodness that can contribute to building the bagong Pilipinas we all aspire for. Let the acts fall where it should fall. Pagpapatuloy po namin itong hearing namin hangga't matapos po ito at tayo makagawa ng magandang batas upang once and for all ihintuna ang mga kalokohan dito sa ating bayan. Magandang umaga po sa inyo lahat.
Thank you, Bishop Congressman Benny Abante. So before we proceed with the hearing proper, may we ask the committee secretary to please acknowledge our resource person for today's committee hearing. Comsec?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In today's hearing, we have with us from the Anti-Money Laundering Council, we have attorney Adrian Arpon and attorney Emmet Manantan. From the Bureau of Immigration, we have attorney Homer Areliano, the head of the Prosecution and Legal Assistance Section, and attorney Ongkad. From the Bureau of Internal Revenue, we have attorney Seventan Orculia. From the Bureau of Corrections, we have with us Superintendent Gerardo Padilla. From the Department of Foreign Affairs, we have Michelle Abriones and Mr. Amer Tago. From the Department of Interior and Local Government, we have USEC Juan Victor Yamas. From the Land Registration Authority, we have attorney Salviente Thaddeus Elisaldi, the acting director of legal service. From the National Bureau of Investigation, we have attorney Agrefina de la Cruz, attorney Rose Jonathan Galicia, and attorney Yentel Malikad. From the Office of the Solicitor General, we have Ms. Sheila Marie Sulit Andaya. From the Philippine Amusement and Gaming Corporation, we have Brigadier General Raoul Villanueva and Ms. Laarni Orbeta. From the Presidential Anti-Organized Crime Commission, I am not sure if they are around. Please present yourselves. From the Bureau of Customs, we have attorney Willy Sarmiento. From the Philippine Drug Enforcement Agency, we have with us the Director General, DG Moro Vergilio Lazo. From the Philippine Statistics Authority, we have engineer Mariza Grande, the Assistant National Statistician. From the Securities and Exchange Commission, we have attorney Hallie Oliver Labayo. From the Philippine National Police, we have Police Brigadier General Jose Hidalgo and also Police Colonel Jay Di Maandal. From the local government units, we have with us Mayor Carmelo Lazatin. From Porak Pampanga, also represented by engineer Myla Agasan and Mr. Glenn Lansangan. And from the Hongsheng Gaming Technology, we have Mr. Dennis Kunanan. From Lucky South 99, Ms. Ronalin Baterna and Norman Macapagal. Also with us from Lucky South 99 Outsourcing, its president Julian M. Linsangan, Edwin Seang, and Marlon Ryan Chua. From Lucky South 99 Limited, yes, also Mr. Dennis Kunanan and Norman Macapagal. And other invitees, we have with us Mr. Alberto Rodolfo de la Serna, Mrs. Nellati Cruz de Guzman. From the DOJ, you have attorney Wesley Young. And... That's all. Also, Ms. Cassandra Ong is still under contempt and in our detention facility. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your honors.
Thank you, Comsec. Before we proceed again to the committee hearing proper, allow the chair first to dispose of some admin matters that we have at the moment. So may we ask the co-chair Congressman Padwano to please discuss all our admin matters that we wish to take up this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Mr. Chairman, during the third hearing, Attorney Harry Roque, under oath, committed to this committee that he will submit all those documents that being requested by this honorable committee. First, Mr. Chairman, he was required to submit medical hospital records and proof of two surgeries performed on Ms. Myla Roque. But I have here right now the letter of Ms. Myla Roque requesting for her issues in today's hearing. Isa lang pong surgery ang nangyari sa kanya last year. So until now, Mr. Harry Roque has not yet submitted this document. Second, Mr. Chairman, the deed of sale and BIR transfer payments of the 1.8 hectares of land in multinational values paranyake. Third, all documents submitted in Securities and Exchange Commission regarding the transfer of shares to attorney Percival Ortega. Fourth, extrajudicial settlement of estate to the unnamed aunt, including corresponding BIR tax returns. Fifth, the statement of asset and liabilities of Mr. Harry Roque from 2016 to 2022. Sixth, income tax return of Jang Cham Holdings and Trading Incorporated for calendar years 2014 to 2022. Sixth, Mr. Harry Roque and his wife's income tax return for calendar years 2014 to 2022. And seventh, beneficial ownership of transparency from WOTD or similar documents showing true and beneficial ownership submitted to the SEC concerning Jang Cham Holdings and Trading Incorporated. The seventh, judicial affidavit executed by Ms. Ronalin Baterna and judicial affidavit executed by Catherine Cassandra Elong. All these documents being requested or directed for Harry Roque. Mr. Harry Roque has submitted this committee. Until now, we have received, Mr. Chairman, and we have received a letter from him for a motion to quash. And maybe that will be discussed on the later part of this hearing, Mr. Chairman. So all the documents which was committed by Mr. Harry Roque was not submitted to this committee for the record, Mr. Chairman. Now to this, SEC, they're required to submit beneficial ownership and transparency form or similar documents showing true and beneficial ownership submitted to the SEC concerning Jang Cham Holdings and Trading Incorporated. Nandito po, nasubmit po beneficial ownership for 2021 and 2022. For SSS, list of SSS members and dates of membership cover rates of employees of Hongsheng Gaming Technology, Jang Cham Holdings and Trading Corporation, Sunyouwan Technology, Baofu, Lucky South 999, Lucky South 999 Outsourcing, Lucky South 999 Limited Corporation, and Whirlwind Corporation. This was requested by Congressman De Go. Comsec, have they submitted all those documents being required from SSS?
Mr. Chair, we have not yet received such documents.
Ah, with that, Mr. Chairman, I move to issue a showcase order for the SSS. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion to issue a showcase order to SSS? Duly seconded. Hearing no objection. The motion is carried.
For the BID, Mr. Chairman, personal details of Pogo IGL For the BID Mister Chairman, personal details of Pogo IGL workers whose working visas were canceled. BID, have you submitted that?
Good morning Mister Chair, yes Mister Chair, those were previously submitted.
Thank you. Now let's proceed with the AFAB. AFAB was ordered to submit the feasibility studies relative to business venture in Bataan submitted by Attorney Harry Roque. AFAB, Comsec, have they submitted?
We have not yet received such documents.
Is AFAB present? Wala. Mister Chairman, I move to issue a show cause order for AFAB to submit these feasibility studies relative to the to the business venture in Bataan by the company of Mister Harry Roque. So move Mister Chairman.
There is a motion to issue a show cause order to AFAB. Julie seconded, any objections? No objections, motion is carried.
Next is for the PNP to submit documents mentioned by Police Lieutenant Colonel Espinido in his affidavits as the list of police generals and other PNP officials who receive money from Kerwin Espinoza's group as indicated in the ledger and copies of clear checks that were recovered from their account. Mister Chairman, is the PNP, Comsec? Comsec, has the PNP submitted?
Not yet sir.
Is there any representative from the PNP? From the PNP? Wala?
We have a representative sir.
Before we dispose with that matter Mister Chairman, let me move to the next matter. The last, for Napolcom Commissioner Edilberto Leonardo, is he present? Police retired Colonel, and now Napolcom Commissioner Leonardo, is he present? Last three years, copy of salend? Wala?
Mister Chairman, last hearing Colonel Leonardo was present.
Yeah, but he, Comsec, did he submit the documents being required from him?
Not yet sir.
Mister Chairman, I move to issue a show cause for Napolcom Commissioner Edilberto Leonardo for his salend for the last three years. So move Mister Chairman.
There is a motion to issue a show cause order for Colonel Edilberto Leonardo and submit documents required by the committee. Julie seconded, hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Same as through with Police Major General Rume Karamat, he was required to submit his salends for the last three years. Is General Karamat present?
Sir, he sent an excuse letter, but the document has not yet been submitted.
Again Mister Chairman, I move to issue a show cause order for Major General Rume Karamat with regards to his salend for the past three years. So move Mister Chairman.
If, if I may Congressman Karamat, Congressman Paduano, there was, there's an emergency in the family of General Karamat. So we'll give him that time to be able to comply with the requirements of the Quadcom.
I yield to the ruling of the Chair. Allow me to proceed Mister Chairman. For Mister Julian Linsangan, Lucky South 999 Outsourcing, you are ordered to submit a copy of the deed of sale of 2,500 square meter property of Puting Kahoy amounting to 16.7 million at 7,000 pesos per square meter. Nasubmit na to Comsec? Is Mister Linsangan present? Mister Linsangan, oh did you submit and comply? You submitted na? When? Ah please approach the mic.
Good morning Mister Chair. Yes Your Honor, today na submit na po.
Just today?
Yes Your Honor.
Comsec, do you confirm? Kindly check, okay thank you po.
Thank you Your Honor.
And next Mister Chairman to the AMLOC, copy of initial report investigation on Whirlwind Corporation and Lucky South 999. AMLOC. Please.
Good morning Mister Chair. We, we have it with us Your Honor, but can we manifest that we presented to you in an executive session sir?
Chairman, the AMLOC is a copy of those documents being required to them by this committee and they are requesting for an executive session. Will we grant them?
Does the information you wish to share with the committee has a national security implication, Attorney?
Mister Chair, we are in the process of finalizing the filing of our...
Okay, we will evaluate your request and please stand by so we can, the committee can decide on the request from your office.
Thank you Mister Chair.
Please proceed.
Mister Chairman, next is the DOJ status of DOJ investigation and update of cases against personalities of Lucky South 999 and Whirlwind. DOJ is present? DOJ? DOJ and BI?
And BI is present? DOJ, any representing from DOJ?
From the NBA sir.
Anyway, Mister Chairman, to dispose of the requirements, pwede naman po mamaya dun sa Pogo, pwede natin tanungin sila on the updates of the case. So, okay lang po, just, okay, just wait for the time. Now next is for the PAGCOR, list of approved license as well as unlicensed Pogo nationwide. PAGCOR?
Good morning sir. The document sir, it's on its way sir, because we're just awaiting for the signature of the Chairman of the transmitted letters.
Oh when was that? Will be submitted and distributed today?
Yes sir.
Today?
Yes sir.
Okay, thank you. Now to the Bureau of Immigration, yung copy po, yung, I was the one who requested the copy of the official document no, from Indonesia containing the reasons of deportation with regards to Catherine Cassandra Leong and Miss Yelago.
We submitted it this morning Your Honor.
Thank you. To the DFA, copy of official document from Indonesia containing the reasons, the same, DFA. DFA is present? DFA please? Submitted na? Okay DFA, you have submitted na? This document, thank you. Parabili sa po natin. Then, all the, all the, the five documents being requested was addressed to Comsec. Number one, to secure a copy of the death certificate of Mayor Navarro of Claren, Miss Ames Occidental, I was informed by Comsec that they have already sent a letter request for this matter. And then to secure official report on PIS Roberto Quinto, on the death of Roberto Quinto, we have a copy now?
Yes, Mister Chairman, I have here a copy from the Bureau of Corrections pertaining to the report on the death of PIS Robert Quinto. And the report on the Chinese nationals charged with illegal drugs who died from July 2016 to 2017.
Yes Mister Chairman. So let me proceed Mister Chairman. Continue lang to, with regards to the excuse letter made by Mister Harry Roque last hearing with, in relation to the engagement abroad. Comsec?
As of now sir, we have searched the internet for the address, but unfortunately there is no email, only its website. We have contacted them, but no, no reply so far.
Ah please follow up lang po.
Yes sir.
And next is for Mister Dela Serna Records of Enrollment in Omni Aviation School.
Nandyan na po? Yes sir.
Paki, ingi ako nagkopya. Okay, then, for the AMLOC, status of our request, yung asset preservation order. Can you, okay, can you, can you appraise the committee na lang dun sa executive session with regards to that? Saman na po natin. That, that's all Mister Chairman, thank you.
Thank you Congressman Paduano. In addition to the list of admin matters mentioned by Congressman Paduano, there are more admin matters received by the committee. The committee received a letter from Superintendent Gerardo F. Padilla requesting for transfer of his detention from Bikutan and requesting the committee to grant him an executive session on a very important information he wished to reveal. We are also in receipt of a letter from Cassandra Leong, Catherine Cassandra Leong, explaining to the committee why she has not signed the waiver she promised during an open hearing. And in her letter, she stated the reason was because there was already a money laundering case filed by the National Bureau of Investigation. Therefore, the waiver does not apply anymore because we can have access on her financial records and bank transactions pursuant to the Anti-Money Laundering Act. Another letter, the committee received...
In relation to Cassandra also, she's being invited on September 5 by Senate.
Okay, there's also a letter coming from Attorney Andre B. Mortel from the Senate Committee on Justice and Human Rights requesting Miss Cassandra Ong to be present on September 5, 2024 at 1:00 PM to be part of their panel on the investigation that they are conducting at the moment. So last is the letter from, excuse letter from Attorney Maria Gracia Dioco. Excuse letter stating the reason that she has a hearing to attend to in Mabalakat City, Pampanga at 9 o'clock this morning.
Mister Chairman, for the information of the members, they mentioned the name Attorney Dioco is the attorney that authorized the sublease agreement between Whirlwind and Lucky South 999.
Mister Chair?
Yes Congressman Flores?
Mister Chair, as far as the letter of Superintendent Padilla requesting for the executive session Mister Chair, inasmuch as we want to keep this public and transparent and if it appears that his testimony is not gonna affect national security or is contrary to public morals or decency Mister Chair, then I don't think that we should allow an executive session, that matters Mister Chair.
While I agree with the position of Congressman Keith Flores on the issue of the request by Superintendent Padilla, may I request Your Honor that we take it up later after we complete the discussion on other matters related to our topic for today. And we will hold in abeyance for the meantime the decision of the committee on the statement made by Congressman Flores.
Very well Mister Chair.
Thank you.
Mister Chair?
Congressman Abante?
While you said that we are holding in abeyance the request of Superintendent Padilla, I would like to register my objection to the executive session agreeing with Congressman Flores about this. Thank you Mister Chair.
May I likewise request Congressman Abante, the Court Chair and the Chair of the Committee on Human Rights to, if I may request Congressman Abante to defer for the meantime decision of the Chair and the committee on the position you stated together with Congressman Flores.
Yes Mister Chair. But also, I also would like to mention the request, the letter of Catherine Cassandra Ong, which I also object Mister Chair.
So, okay, that, the statement...
The fact that she is not even present today, she ought to be present, not only to write a letter to us, but she should be present and tell it to us directly.
Okay, Comsec, can we ask Cassandra Leong to be present in this committee hearing? We will...
Mister Chairman? Mister Chairman?
With indulgence of Congressman Abante, yes Congressman Fernandez?
I think we have an agenda to follow. And in accordance with our agenda, we will be tackling first the issue of General, Superintendent Padilla. And thereafter, we will be discussing about the Pogo issue. And thereafter again, the issue of Cassandra Leong will be discussed further. So I think the right timing for the, for the motion of Chairman Abante will be on the third part of our agenda Mister Chairman.
Thank you Congressman Fernandez.
Mister Chair, can I ask for a one minute suspension please?
One minute suspended. Hearing is resumed. Congressman Abante, as you were saying earlier, may I ask the honorable Court Chair to please repeat what you have stated earlier? Yes Mister Chair? May I ask you to please repeat what you have stated earlier before we...
There are two, there are two objections that I made Mister Chair. And it is up to the Chairman of the Committee if he would like all this in abeyance. But I object agreeing with Congressman Flores about the request of Superintendent Padilla for an executive session. And then secondly, I also object the request of Cassandra Ong. Mister Chair, as far as not taking the oath to wait for the accounts, the fact that she is not even present today, is she here? Alright, so perhaps Mister Chair, upon your indulgence, you could be able to talk about it later on.
So, thank you Congressman Abante. May I request Congressman Abante that we discuss and deliberate on the statement made by Congressman Keith Flores and Chair Benny Abante on the issue of whether the committee will grant the request of Superintendent Padilla in a later time today. So we will hold in abeyance the discussion on that particular issue for the moment.
I accede Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Now we proceed, ah yes Congressman Paduano?
Mister Chairman, before we proceed with the, with the interpolation to the resource persons, let me just state that we have not yet disposed on the supwena issued to Mister Harry Roque with regards to the documents. But as I've said unfortunately, we have not sent the supwena to Mister Harry Roque and all those documents that he has committed during the third hearing because of the weather condition Mister Chairman. But Mister Chairman, we have to dispose on that, what will be the position of the committee with regards to the invitation for his wife to be present. Na nakakabit po dun sa mga dokumentong nire-request na komiting ito. Thank you Mister Chairman. And that's the status of this hearing Mister Chairman. We have still the admin matters. Thank you Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you Congressman Paduano. May I likewise request Congressman Paduano to allow Attorney Harry Roque more time because he is invited in our hearing today and he has to appear. He has committed to the committee that he will appear before us today and submit all the documents that he has openly stated during the last hearing. However, we are in receipt of a motion to quash from Attorney Harry Roque. And before we discuss this and deliberate on this motion to quash, perhaps we can give him more time so he can come and he can be present while we deliberate on this... and he can be present while we deliberate on this particular subject, your honor. Is that alright?
I yield to the position of the chair, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Salamat, Congressman Paduano. Congressman Fernandez.
In relation to the invitation that we have sent to Myra Loque Roque, the wife of Harry Roque, what is the status of this invitation, Mr. Chair?
We are in receipt of a excuse letter from Ms. Myla Roque and with attachments from medical practitioners saying that she has undergone several tests. And again, I'd like to request the honorable co-chair, if we can deliberate on this when Attorney Harry Roque has already arrived in this committee hearing, your honor.
Okay, so we will be discussing when he arrive?
Yes.
Can we ask the Comsec if he already communicated with the Comsec regarding with his presence today?
Yes, sir.
Is he going to come?
There is no confirmation, sir.
There is no confirmation?
Yes.
So, your honor, if he will not appear today as he committed in the last hearing that we had, then perhaps another motion is appropriate. And we will discuss that later this afternoon before this committee hearing adjourns. If that is alright with Congressman- Thank you Congressman Fernandez. At this point, before we proceed- Yes, we will allow Ms. Cassandra Lee Ong to be present in the committee hearing on September 5 at the Senate. Okay, before we proceed further, there is a point of order that is being raised by our former president Gloria Macapagal Arroyo. Ma'am, you are recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman and honorable chairman. Our proceedings are adopting formal rules of public hearings, including subpoenas on statements, contempt decisions, detention, decisions of executive session, etc. So I would like to give a gentle reminder that in such formal proceedings, hearsay does not deserve the same credence compared to personal knowledge evidence. That's my point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. The observation of the former president is duly noted by the committee and we will deliberate on that at the appropriate time. Thank you, ma'am. So the next part of the agenda is the- Let us proceed first with the ground rules that will be stated by our vice chair Congressman Romeo Acop. Congressman Acop, you are recognized.
Mr. Chair, before we proceed to that, my request that we acknowledge the members of the four committees present today. We haven't done that yet.
Okay. Comsec, you are directed to recognize all the members present in this joint, the fourth joint public hearing of the QuadCom. Comsec.
Mr. Chair.
Congressman Acop.
While waiting for the list of members of the four committees present in this morning's hearing, may be given the opportunity to remind the members and the resource persons present of our approved rule on interpolation. And I would just like to quote the rule. During the period of interpolation, resource persons shall be given five minutes each to state their position or make a presentation at the meeting. Resource persons shall not be allowed to speak or make interjections until they are recognized by the lead chairperson or the presiding officer. Committee members and other house members shall be recognized by the lead chairperson to make statements or ask questions to the resource persons. No member shall speak unless recognized by the lead chairperson or the presiding officer. Members shall be given 10 minutes each for their interpolation, excluding the answers of the resource persons. No member, except the lead person or the presiding officer, shall be allowed to make interjections during the course of the interpolation of a member of the four committees. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Congressman Acop. Comsec, can you please recognize the members, the honorable members present in our committee hearing today?
Mr. Chair.
Congressman Abante.
While the, our Comsec is trying to get all of the- Are you, you're ready, okay?
Comsec, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, your honors. We have with us in this public hearing today, of course, our chairpersons, Representative Robert A. Barberz, Representative Danes Fernandez, Representative Joseph Stefan Paduano, Representative Benvenido Abante Jr., Representative Aurelio Dong Gonzalez, our senior deputy speaker, Representative Romeo Acop, Representative Deputy Speaker David J.J. Suarez, Representative Zia Alonto Ajong, Representative Jonathan Keith Flores, Representative Johnny Pimentel, Representative Gervil Jinkebitrix Luistro, Representative Wilter Palma, Representative Jose Arthur Garcia Jr., Representative Jane Castro, Representative Sergio Dagooch, Representative Maximo Dalug Jr., Representative Francisco Paulo Ortega V., Representative Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, Representative Dean Assisio, Representative Julian Jam Baronda, Representative Christine Singson Mihan, Representative Arne Fuente Belia, Representative Reinante Arrogancia, Representative Emerson Pasqual, Representative Ron Salo, Representative Teodrico Jaresco Jr., Representative Jefferson Conghun, Representative Faustino Michael Carlos D III, Representative Francisco Jose Matugas, Representative Ramon Rodrigo Gutierrez, Representative Bonifacio Bosita, Representative Ricardo Cruz Jr., Representative Lordan Suon, Representative Ching Bernos, Representative Roberto Puno, Representative Salvador Plito, Representative Isabel Maria Zamora, Representative Amparo Maria Zamora, Representative Janet Garin, Representative Jose Aquino, Representative Ambrosio Cruz, Representative Alfred de los Santos. That's all, Mr. Chair, your honors, thank you.
Thank you, Comsec. Now we proceed with the interpolations. We have a list of interpolators who who has signify their intent to ask questions. May I have the list, Comsec, of all the interpolators so we can call them? One-minute suspension.
Hearing resumed. Okay, the first interpolator will be Congressman Johnny Pimentel. You have the floor, Congressman.
Before I do my interpolation, may inquire if this committee has already issued a subpoena to SPO for Art Narsoles? Because Narsoles is one of the, if not, the main player in the case of the killing of three Chinese nationals. If I recall, during the last hearing, the committee has already issued a showcase order. So may I inquire if there's already a subpoena to the Comsec?
So what's the query of Congressman Johnny Pimentel? What's your query?
If there was already subpoena issued to Art Narsoles. Because if there is none-
Comsec, what's the status of SPO for Art Narsoles?
I will check, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. We have issued a subpoena, but this was not served. Refused to receive because they are already retired.
Under our house rules, Mr. Chair.
It's a showcase order, sir.
What did you issue, showcase order or subpoena?
Showcase order, sir.
Showcase order. Therefore, Mr. Chair, since it's still no show, I move that we, this committee issue subpoena to SPO for Art Narsoles, Mr. Chair. So move.
Okay, there's a motion to issue subpoena to SPO for Art Narsoles. Any second motion, Julie seconded, any objection? Hearing not decided, motion is now approved.
Mr. Chair, may I proceed?
You may proceed.
I'll now direct my questions to Chief Superintendent Padilla. Colonel Padilla, kamusta po kayo?
Okay lang po, your honor.
Kumain na po kayo, nagalmusal na po kayo?
Yes po, your honor.
Kamusta namang po ang lagay ninyo dun sa detention center ninyo?
Okay na lang din po.
Well, we have already taken note of your request. But anyway, Mr. Padilla, or rather Colonel Padilla, may sinumiti po kayong affidavit na bago?
Yes po.
Dated September 2, 2024, notarized po sa Tagig City. Totoo po ba ito?
Yes po, your honor. If I will be given the chance, I can even submit additional documents for that.
Well, that will be upon the chair. But anyway, I have a copy of your affidavit, Colonel Padilla. And dito po, ay may lagda po kayo sa dalawang pahina. Ito po ay pirma po ninyo? Pinatutuhanan mo po ito na ito ay pirma ninyo? Itong affidavit po ninyo sa dalawang pahina?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
At ito po ba ay lahat ng nakasaad dito? Pinatutuhanan mo na lahat ito ay totoo?
With all my knowledge, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Ito ba, Colonel Padilla, itong affidavit na bago na sinumiti sa komitiba? Ito ba ay ginawa mo ng kusang loob? O may nagjuk sayo na gumawa nito?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair. Sariling at kusa ko pong ginawa.
Tinatanong ko po ito, Colonel Padilla, Mr. Chair. Dahil may sinumiti po kayong affidavit din, dated August 27, 2024, hindi po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Pero 'yung sinabit po ninyo ang affidavit nung August 27, at itong sinamitho ninyo ngayong September 2, ay magkasalungat. Itong sinabit po ninyo na affidavit ng September 2 ay talawas po doon sa mga sinaad po ninyo nung August 27. Meron pong mga aspeto o mga bagay na hindi ninyo binanggit sa September 8, August 27, pero dito sa September 2 ay nakasaad po. Ang tanong ko po, bakit po nagbago ang isip nyo at binaguhin nyo 'yung affidavit nung August 27?
Binaginatan ko po 'yung aking personal safety and that of my family.
Ilang taon na po ba kayo?
64 po.
Kailan mo kayo magre-retire?
This coming November 20-
September?
November 2024.
November, dalawang buwan na lang po. And that is why it is very appropriate that you should really retire on a high note. So I therefore strongly suggest that you should cooperate with this committee to maintain your integrity since you have served the government for several years. Ngayon, Colonel Padilla, ayon sa iyong salaysay, kayo ay naging superintendent or warden ng double penal colony from 2015 to 2018. So tatlong taon po, hindi po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Ano ba ang trabaho ng isang warden? Pwede po bang pakisabi mo dito sa-
I am the overall in charge of the whole double prison and penal farm during that time, your honor, Mr. Chair.
So overall in charge po, ano? So ibig sabihin, kayo ang tagapamahala ng buong double penal colony, hindi po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Sa madaling salita po, kayo ang nagsusupervise, kayo po ang nagmamanage ng lahat ng gawain sa double penal colony, hindi po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
So in short, meron pong kasabihan sa Ingles, "the buck stops here." In short, all the decisions regarding procedures or orders, mga utos sa mga provincial, sa mga guards, in short, everything that goes on in that penal colony, kayo po ang nadi-desisyon, hindi po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Ngayon, pupunta tayo dun muna sa nilipat ng mga Chinese national. Nung 2016 po, meron pong nilipat na tatlong suspected Chinese drug lords or Chinese nationals who were charged with drug offenses. Ayon sa iyong salaysay, Colonel Padilla, tinutulan mo po itong paglipat dun sa double penal colony. Bakit po kayo tumutol?
That's true, your honor, Mr. Chair. During that time po, talagang wala pong facilities for the high risk and the high-profile inmates sa double prison and penal farm. That's why the following year, 2017, nagrequest po ako ng budget. Because of that, dinadalhan kami ng mga PDL, high-risk and the high-profile. Nagrequest po ako ng budget to construct super maximum facility in double prison and penal farm. Yan po ang naging dahilan. Actually, I have a document opposing the transfer of the Chinese national during that time. And 'yung mga Chinese national po yan, in fact, they have pending cases in Montinlupa City. In state ko po dun sa aking request, masyado pong magastos sa part ng gobyerno from time to time kung i-susubrina to attend a series of hearings in Montinlupa City. Kaya po, inopus ko po yan. Pero that was July 2015, fact. Then after October po, wala pong nangyari, nagrequest po ulit ako. Nereiterate ko po na, naibalik po 'yung mga high-risk and high-profile PDL sa Montinlupa. Pero, no action pa rin pong mangyari.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Due respect to our colleague Congressman Pimentel, baka pwede muna pong basahin 'yung affidavit na bago ni Colonel Padilla para at least magkaroon ng idea 'yung mga members.
Your honor, Mr. Chair, can I request for, to, for an executive session? May mga very sensitive po na issue po dun.
One-minute suspension.
Hearing is assumed. Your Honors, the parliamentary status is that interpolation was being, uh, questions were being propounded to Colonel Padilla by Honorable Johnny Pimentel and with an interjection made by our senior deputy speaker, Don Gonzalez. Uh, and he made a motion to to read, ask the witness to read the affidavit that he has sworn and signed. Uh, now, the parliamentary status is that there is a pending motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Congressman Gonzalez?
Mr. Chairman, I move to withdraw my previous motion, Mr. Chairman.
So, you are withdrawing, Your Honor, your motion to ask Colonel Padilla to read?
He is, uh, affidavit.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, have we given the copy of the new affidavit that was uh, signed by Superintendent Padilla to all the members who are present today?
Comsec?
Yeah, that's the reason why they are asking for the, um, for that affidavit that has been given to this Quad com. Can we ask the Comsec to give first the members about this new affidavit?
Okay, please provide copies of the affidavit of current Superintendent Padilla to all our honorable members. And we will give you time to peruse over this.
Perhaps also the previous affidavit that he made. Wala nabiyanan po sila, lahat.
And all other affidavits that we have in the secretariat, please provide all the members present in our committee hearing today. So...
Mr. Chair, we thank you, Mr. Chairman, for...
Thank you, Congressman Aquino. Congressman Keith Flores?
Mr. Chair, I heard Colonel Padilla again request for an executive session. And I'm reiterating my opposition to it, Mr. Chair, stating the grounds that his testimony does not include matters which may affect national security, nor does it contain any matters which is offensive to public morals or decency, Mr. Chair. I'm reiterating my opposition to it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there is a manifestation made by Congressman Keith Flores. In fact, it is an objection to the request of Colonel Padilla for a executive session. So in the meantime, uh, what we can continue propounding questions based on the affidavit of Colonel Padilla that we have in our possession now, until maybe another information that he wants to reveal before this committee that is not included in his affidavit. So in that case, uh, we will proceed with the questioning and the interpolation to Colonel or Superintendent Padilla based on the affidavit that he has submitted before this committee. Is that all right, honorable members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Congressman Keith? Thank you. Congressman Acop?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Congressman Acop and then Congressman Palma. Congressman Acop, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, I would like to agree with the Honorable Keith Flores. Simply because the questions to be asked will be pertaining to the statements he made in his affidavit. And this has been subscribed and sworn to and therefore, uh, partakes of being an official document. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Acop, for that manifestation. So now we will proceed with the...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Congressman Palma, I'm sorry. Yes, Congressman Palma, you're recognized.
With the permission of the Chair. Uh, just to fast track the proceeding, may I just suggest that we'll give time first, with all due respect to the Honorable Pimentel. Give time to Colonel Padilla to review his affidavit and whatever he wants to say. And then from there, we can start the interpretation.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Congressman Palma. Yes, I am sure that Colonel Padilla is quite familiar with this affidavit, which he has subscribed and sworn to. Uh, you're not denying that it was your, it is your affidavit, correct, Colonel Padilla?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
So if there are any information you wish to reveal before this committee that is not included in your sworn statement, perhaps we can discuss whether we can grant you the executive session that you have requested. Okay lang po ba yan? Maliwanag po yan, Colonel?
Uh, 'yung lang po ang talagang nalalaman ko sa pangyayari kasi, uh, I was really under pressure during that time. So, uh, meron po nga akong documents na pwedeng ipakita na nagpapatutoo dun sa sinasabi ko pong affidavit. Eh, wala pong ibang pwede kong ikwan na hindi po talaga totoong nangyari. Yan lang po ang totoong nangyari kasi, uh, 'yung sinabi ko nga na may mga previous request ako, so nasense ko talaga na it is really a major government anti-illegal drugs or operations against that, uh, PDLs.
Okay, uh, we understand. 'Yung iyong statement, uh, Colonel, in that case, we will now proceed with the interpolation.
Mr. Chair, just one, one point of clarification. Uh, Colonel Superintendent Padilla, aside from your affidavit, do you want to say something which is important to this committee? Otherwise, will, uh, the affidavit will suffice. May, may meron ka pa bang pwede i-reveal sa amin na importante?
Uh, if you grant me, uh, for some time in a...
Oh, today, today?
Executive session.
Why, why don't you tell now? Because the people is also waiting for your, uh...
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, but uh, I, it will endanger my, of course, my safety and of my family.
Okay. Uh, we perfectly understand your situation, Superintendent Padilla, and as you have committed to this committee that you will share more vital information in relation to the investigation of the Quad Committee. However, since Congressman Johnny Pimentel has already started propounding questions to you based on the affidavit that you have submitted, subscribed, and sworn to, then we continue with that. Until later, we will grant you an executive session. Is that okay?
Mr. Chair?
Congressman Acop?
Uh, pwede po bang malaman kay Superintendent Padilla? 'Yung bang impormasyon dito na inlagay nyo po dito sa affidavit nyo, hindi pa kompleto?
Yan lang po 'yung ayon sa aking nalalaman, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Eh, kung kompleto na po ito, bakit po kayo humihingi ng executive session?
Tunpong mga sensitive na issues na hindi ko po...
So, meron po kayong hindi inilagay dito sa affidavit po ninyo?
Yes, uh, uh, in fact, it was leading to that, uh, sensitive issue.
So, kung magkakaroon tayo ng executive session, ang sasabihin po ninyo, wala po rito sa affidavit nito dahil kung ganun na mangyayari, ipapatigil ko 'yung executive session dahil diluloko muna kami eh.
Ganun po ang, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Acop. So again, the parliamentary status is that uh, interpolations being made by Congressman Johnny Pimentel uh, temporarily stopped because of a motion which eventually was withdrawn by SDS Don Gonzalez uh, on the issue of executive session. Now, we will now proceed with the interpolations and then after the interpolations on the affidavit uh, of Colonel Padilla. And if there are any information that we want to solicit from him that is not within this affidavit, then we will probably uh, grant him his request of an executive session. So we can now proceed with the questioning of Congressman Pimentel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That is precisely why it is driving at. Anyway, the members already have the affidavit, but based on my observations, um, the affidavit that does not disclose everything that happened in the killing of the three Chinese nationals. Anyway, ipagpatuloy ko po 'yung pagtanong ko. Naitanong ko na po kanina, nanilipat na dun 'yung tatlong Chinese national. Ang tanong ko po, may memorandum ba? Kanino galing 'yung memorandum sa paglipat ng Chinese national galing National Penitentiary going to the Dabao Penal Colony?
Yes, Your Honor, I have, uh, meron pong transfer order yan from the National Headquarters in New Belibid Prison. Uh, escorted by personnel. 'Yun po ang sinusunod nung escort, uh, based on that, uh, order.
Okay, uh, meron ang order, meron kang kopya po niyan. Mr. Chair, ang tanong sunod ko po, na tanong, pagdating dun ng Chinese national, saan mo nilagay? Anong cell da mo nilagay 'yung mga Chinese national?
Sinip ti ko po in, uh, in, uh, in one cell within the, dun pa rin sa, uh, prison disciplinary part of prison disciplinary dormitory since wala po kaming facility for the high-profile and high-risk PDL.
Meron ho kayong mga ibang foreigners, hindi po ba? Bago dumating 'yung Chinese national, meron kayong mga foreign nationalities na nakakulong doon? Sila ba ay magkasama dun sa mga Pilipino na bilango o pinaghiwalay na...
Pinaghiwalay po namin, Mr. Chair, pero...
So nakaiwalay, okay. Uh, Colonel Padilla, nakaiwalay ang Pilipino at saka 'yung mga foreigner, foreign prisoners or PDLs. Saan nyo nilagay 'yung tatlong Chinese national? Dun ba sa mga Pilipino o dun sa mga, uh, sa mga foreign nationals?
Sa foreigners lang po.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I just want to put it in record that the statement or testimony of Colonel Padilla fully corroborates with the statement of our resource person.
fully corroborates with the statement of our resource person, Mr. Lupoldo Tan. Doon po sa affidavit ni Mr. Lupoldo Tan, na sinabi niya on paragraph 12, 'yung tatlong Chinese drug lords nakabukod po sila. So, it just shows, Mr. Chair, that our resource person, Mr. Lupoldo Tan, was telling the truth. Kasi kinorobirate na po niya na nakabukod. Ngayon, alam na na honin niyo ang nangyari, hindi po ba Colonel Padilla?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
'Yung tatlong, 'yung dalawang pumatay na si Lupoldo Tan at saka si Andy Magdararo ay nilipat ho ninyo sa Bartolina, hindi po ba? If I'm not mistaken, August 11, nilipat ninyo si Lupoldo Tan at saka si Andy Magdararo. Hindi po ba nilipat ninyo sa Bartolina on the pretext na may nahuling sabu sa cell da nila? Kaya nilipat ninyo 'yung dalawa ng August 11, hindi po ba?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay. On August, after two days po, 'yung Chinese national na dumating doon, na binilanggo ninyo doon sa mga foreign nationals, eh binartolina namampun ninyo at isinilid nun niyo doon sa cell da size kung saan nandun 'yung dalawang PDL, si Lupoldo Tan at saka Andy Magdararo, hindi po ba?
'Yun po ang nangyari, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Itong tanong ko, Mr. Chair, and para malaman ng mga miyembro natin, this is the big question. Sino po ang nagbigay ng order na ilipat si Andy at saka si Tata sa cell da size at ilipat 'yung tatlong Chinese national? Sinabi po ninyo kanina na kayo ang overall person in charge ng Dapicol. Sino po ang nagbigay ng order?
The ship commander, Your Honor, Mr. Chair. Nandito po sa blatter po ng lagbok ng ship commander.
Bakit po ship commander? Ano ho ba ang ship commander sa hierarchy ninyo? Hindi po, kayo pong overall in charge? Ano ho ang posisyon ng over, pangilan po 'yan, 'yung ship commander, Mr. Chair?
From superintendent, meron pa pong deputy superintendent for security operation. Then from deputy superintendent for security operation, meron pa pong commander of the guards. From commander of the guards, meron pa pong ship commander and then camp commander.
So pangilan po 'yung ship commander, pang apat po?
Pang apat po.
Pang apat o pang lima?
Opo.
Pang apat?
Yes, sir.
Abay Colonel Padilla, mahirap po pangpaniwalaan 'yan, Mr. Chair. Dahil sabi mo nga kanina, ikaw ay natasa ng gobyerno, ikaw ay overall in charge, ikaw ang manager, ikaw ang supervisor ng Dapicol. I don't think all these people here now in this committee will believe you that the decision to transfer the five persons doon sa cell number six ay manghanggaling sa isang lowly official of the BuCor. Sinabi ho niyo kanina, it's on record, ang trabaho po ng superintendent, ng warden, kayo po ang overall in charge. Impossible po na hindi ho niyo alam na ililipat sa Bartolina 'yung limang tao?
At sa level ko po, report na lang po ang nakakarating kasi tulad ng previously, sinabi ko na may kanya-kanya po kaming level of responsibility. Report na lang po, kaya nagbabase po tayo dito sa lagbok. May blatter po kung sino ang totoong naglipat.
Meron ho pa kayong copy nung order na ilipat sila sa memorandum? Ah, doon sa cell da size?
Meron po, kung sino ang nagtransfer.
Sino ang nagpirma?
Ang ship commander po.
So you mean to tell me and you mean to tell this committee, Mr. Chair, na kayo ang overall in charge, kayong superintendent, 'yung number four person sa personnel ninyo gagawa lang ng order without your knowledge, without your approval? Alam muna natin 'yung bureaucracy natin ng gobyerno po. Meron po tayong nasa taas, meron pong mga middle management. Lahat po ng mga middle management, like for example, USEC, ASSEC po. Hindi ho po gumagawa ng memorandum order 'yan kung wala pong pahintulot ng secretary. Mas lalo na po sa inyo, na BuCor, because you are semi-military. Hindi ho mangyayari po na magbibigay ng order, in this case, 'yung Robert Quinto, 'yung po 'yung deputy, 'yung ship commander na sinasabi ninyo, 'yung po ba ang tinutukoy ninyo, Sir Robert Quinto?
Ah, yes po, Your Honor, Mr. Chair. Kasi pag nakarating po sa akin 'yan, nakalagbok na po 'yan after na po nung event.
Sandali, hindi 'yung event ang pinag-uusapan natin, Colonel Padilla. Ang pinag-uusapan natin, sino ang nagutos? Sino ang nagorder na ilipat 'yung dalawang pumatay at saka 'yung namatay na tatlong Chinese national? 'Yun ang pinag-uusapan natin. Hindi ho 'yung incidente po ang pinag-uusapan natin.
Nakareflect po rito sa blatter.
Sino po 'yung ship commander?
Ah, Si Juan Bilyahos, ang ship commander.
Buhay pa ba 'yung taong 'yun?
Buhay pa po, pero ayon sa nakalagay dito sa blatter.
Ang... Wag mo natin pag-uusapan po ang blatter, Mr. Chair. 'Yung blatter po, sa pulis po 'yan. Ang pinag-uusapan po natin 'yung order po. 'Yung blatter eh, iba ho 'yung dokumento ho 'yun ng pulis. Pag may krimin po na nangyari, doon po isasalaysay doon. Kung sino mga pumatay, sino ang namatay. Ang pinag-uusapan po natin dito hindi blatter po. And that is not an acceptable document that will prove that you did not order the transfer. So 'yun lang po, Mr. Chair, isa na mga inconsistencies sa affidavit po or sa mga salaysay ni Colonel Padilla. So, dito po tayo. Sa salaysay po ninyo, sa paragraph five, binanggit po ninyo na kayo ay nagkausap sa cellphone ni Colonel Ruina Garmah. Tutupo ba 'yun? Ito po, sinong pa ang salaysay 'yun ninyo? Kayo po ang nagalagay po dito?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair. But I, at ulat ng sinabi ko, can I request?
Okay, mamaya po, pupunta po tayo doon. It will be the committee who will decide on that. Pero nandito po tayo sa hearing and I'm giving the floor, so I have to proceed with my interpolations. Ngayon po, ang tanong ko po sa inyo, paano ho niyo nakausap si Ruina Garmah? Meron ba kayong telepono?
Telepono po, through Jimmy Fortaleza.
Meron ho kayong telephone number ni Colonel Ruina Garmah?
Wala po, through Jimmy, PDL Jimmy Fortaleza lang po.
Okay, sa salaysay po ninyo, nakausap po ninyo si Colonel Garmah through PDL Jimmy Fortaleza. Mr. Chair, I'd like to put it on record that the statement testimony of Colonel Padilla definitely corroborates with the affidavit of PDL Jimmy Fortaleza. On paragraph five, nung Agosto, nung unang linggo ng Agosto 2016, tinawagan ako ni Garmah at sinabi sa akin gusto niyang makausap si Superintendent Padilla. Pinuntahan ko si Superintendent Padilla para ibigay sa kanyang cellphone at makapag-usap sila at pinatutunayan, pinatutotohanan ni Colonel Padilla na nag-usap nga sila through Jimmy Fortaleza. So again, Mr. Chair, nagpapatunay lang to na 'yung resource person natin na si Jimmy Fortaleza ay nagsasabi po ng totoo. Ngayon po, Mr. Chair, ang tanong ko po, Colonel Padilla, nung nag-usap na po kayo ni Colonel Ruina Garmah, ano ho ang sinabi niya sa inyo?
'Yun pong nakalagay po sa aking affidavit, can I...
Okay, babasahin ko po 'yung sinabi ni Garmah. Sabi po ni Chief Garmah, 'yung po tawag ninyo, "May mga tao kami dyan na gagawa at huwag munakwestionin. And whether you like it or not, we will operate and do not interfere. Baka madamay pa pamilya mo. Magko-operate ka na lang or mananagot ka sa amin." Ano ho ba 'yung plano na lang ipagawa? Naintindihan niyo ba kasi 'yung sinabi lang dito, meron kaming ipapagawa, meron kaming ipapa-operate? Ano ho ba ang pagkakaintindi niyo sa sinabi po ni Colonel Garmah?
Tungkol po doon sa pag-i eliminate nung three Chinese nationals.
O, so sinabi niya, in short, Mr. Chair, ang sinabi po ni Garmah, Colonel Padilla, na meron silang operations doon, ipapapatay nila 'yung tatlong Chinese national, hindi po ba?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay. After noon po, pagkatapos 'yun 'yung magkausap ni Colonel Garmah, sinabi niyo po kay Jimmy Fortaleza, "Sige, magkikita na lang kami ni Colonel Garmah", hindi po ba?
Wala po akong matandaang sinabi kong ganun. Ang natandaan ko po, 'yung, kung ano 'yung nilagay ko sa aking affidavit, eh, kasi during that time, talagang intense pressure na po ako kasi nangyari na 'yung sa Abu Yuglati, 'yung prison facility rin po namin doon, na pinasok rin po ng mga operatives.
So, Mr. Chair, ibugin niyo 'yung sabihin, Colonel Padilla, na hindi niyo kilala, hindi kayo nagkita, not even once, ni Colonel Garmah?
Hindi po, kasi 'yung cellphone, hangga't maari, ayaw niyang makuha ko 'yung number niya. Kaya 'yung cellphone na binigay nila kay Jimmy Fortaleza ang ginagamit po, ayaw pong ma-identify 'yung kanyang number.
Pero napaka-impossible po na napakalaking operation. Tapos, through telephone lang po, Mr. Chair, isinunod po ninyo si Garmah. Kilala po ba ninyo si Colonel Garmah nung nag-usap po kayo? May firsthand ba kayo, just through a telephone call, naniniwala po kayo kaagad? Alam na ho muninyo natin na marami hong scammer. Sasabihin lang na ako si Colonel Garmah, may operation ako dyan, meron kaming ipapatay. Eh, lalo na ito, ang order is may ipapapatay kami dyan na Chinese national, ay naniniwala kayo kaagad? Kahit na hindi niyo kilala 'yung tao?
Kilala ko po siya, not personally, professionally, with her position as Deputy Chief of CIDG of Davao.
O, so kilala po ninyo, sabi niyo po kanina, hindi niyo kilala. So ngayon, Mr. Chair, pinatutotohanan mo na kilala mo si Colonel Garmah?
Sa position lang po, pero personally, wala po kaming, at saka doon lang po sa cellphone.
Okay. Mr. Chair, pagkatapos ng nag-usap kayo ni Garmah, inutusan ka, huwag kang makailam, meron kaming operations dyan, may ipapapatay kami. Ano na ang sunod na nangyari? Nag-usap pa ba kayo uli ni Colonel Garmah?
Wala na pong nangyaring pag-uusap pagtapos nun.
Actually, Mr. Chair, ng maghuling pagkatapos sila mag-usap ni Colonel Garmah, doon na po ginawa 'yung plano, which I certainly believe, wag sana po kayo magagalit, which I certainly believe that Colonel Padilla is heavily involved in the planning. Kasi po, unang una na question, hindi po mangyayari ang pag-transfer ng dalawang pumatay at lahat tatlong namatay kung hindi manggagaling sa warden ang order?
If I may, Mr. Chair, Your Honor? 'Yung unang sinabi nila, instruction na kailangan gumawa ko, pero hindi ko po pinansin 'yun. Kaya galit na sila sa akin. Gumawa po sila ng ibang strategy, kasi parang nababagalan sila sa akin. Wala po akong ginago, hindi po ako kumikilos during that time. So, gumawa sila ng another strategy na parang blind nila ako sa pangyayari. Kasi, further, Mr. Chair, can...
Please proceed.
Kasi po, sinipti ko talaga 'yan dyan sa prison disciplinary. 'Yung prison disciplinary, ah, 'yung foreigner cell, within the prison disciplinary din po 'yun, kabila ang cell da lang. Kaya po, nung gumalaw na sila, may mga operations na kuwan, blind na po ako roon, as I said, nakalagbok po lahat sa blatter. 'Yung pati pagwitbit nila sa kabila without my consent. Ganun po ang nangyari. Kumbaga, parang minadali na po nila 'yung operation na 'yun. Reassure na nila ako dahil hindi ako gumagalaw. Gumawa sila ng sariling strategy.
Mr. Chair, ano 'yung sabi ni Colonel Padilla? Sila, ginawa nila, gumawa sila, sino po itong sila?
'Yun na po, involved na po 'yung dalawang PDL at behind that, hindi ko na po alam kung may...
Sandali, Mr. Chair, kayo po ang warden, 'yung dalawang PDL bilanggo po, sila ba magdi-decide na sila nilipat sa Bartolina? Sila ba magdi-decide na sila ang gagalaw? 'Yung, ganito po ha, para mabigyan po ng buong overview or picture lahat ng tao po dito. Itong nangyari pong incidente nito, kung ihahambing po natin sa pelikula, 'yung dalawang tao, si Andy Magdararo at saka si Lupoldo Tan, mga aktor po 'yun. Ngayon, 'yung executive producer po ng incidente po nito, si Colonel Ruina Garmah. Ngayon, ang executive producer nag-uutos lang po 'yan, pero ang floor director dito, ang executive director po dito, si Colonel Padilla, it happened within his premises. He is the man in charge. I do not believe that there was no order coming from him. At saka sinasabi po niya ngayon, gumagalaw sila. Gaga law ba 'yung dalawang PDL doon sa loob ng kulungan na walang pahintulot ng warden? Gaga law ba 'yung sinasabi niyong ship commander ng order na walang pahintulot po sa inyo? That is why, Mr. Chair, marami pa ho dito mga inconsistencies. But I know that there are many, ano, isa pa lang 'yan na sinasabi kong mga inconsistencies, but based on my interpolations and based on the appreciation of the affidavits, I have found out or I have concluded, Mr. Chair, that the affidavit of Colonel Padilla corroborates with the affidavit of Mr. Lupoldo Tan with regards to the Chinese nationals. I also conclude, Mr. Chair, that his testimony corroborates with the affidavit of Jimmy Fortaleza. Inaminahon niya na nakausap niya si Garmah dahil ki Jimmy Fortaleza. However, I believe that Colonel Padilla is holding more information vital to this hearing. Hanggang doon po lang kayo 'yung mga affidavito ninyo, Mr. Chair. Hanggang doon lang po kayo ki Garmah. Pero sasabu sasalaysay ni Lupoldo Tan. Nandun po kayo, una, binanggit po kayo nung kinuntak na kayo ni Colonel Garmah. Sabi niyo po, magkikita kayo. And I believe, Lupoldo Tan, bakit po? Pinalabasunin niyo 'yung dalawang PDL, hindi pinalabas na ano, doon lang sa may gate, para makausap po si Artner Solis at saka si Colonel Garmah. And then nung nangyari pong incidente, pumunta po kayo, inaminoninyo din 'yun sa affidavito ninyo, Mr. Chair. Pagkatapos nung nangyaring incidente, pumunta po kayo sa cell da size at tinignan niyo 'yung namatay ng mga Chinese nationals. Lahat po sa buong salaysay, kayo po ang binabanggit nung dalawang PDLs. Mahirap po mangyari isang ganitong kadrumal-dumal na krimin na kayo po ang in charge ng Dapicol na wala kayong kaalam-alam. Hindi, impossible po mangyari 'yun. I have been in the government service for the past 25 years and all chief executives, ihahahambing ko na lang ikaw na isa kang chief executive ng warden. The pack stops there, all decisions. Kaya po kayo nilagay doon dahil kayo magsusupervise, magmamanage. Impossible ang manager-supervisor, hindi po alam ang nangyayari doon sa bilango. Therefore, Mr. Chair... Therefore, Mr. Chair, I have come to a conclusion, but that is my opinion, that our resource person is lying to us, holding vital information. Marami ho pong inconsistencies doon sa affidavit po niya, yun lang po, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Pimentel. The next to interpolate is Congressman Jay Konghun. Ah, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, maari ko po bang idirekta ang katanungan kay Chief Superintendent Herabdo Padilla?
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colonel Padilla, naiba ang iyong, naiba ang iyong affidavit ah, in some material aspect, ano? Kaya siyempre, ah, magdadahan-dahan tayo, ah, lalong-lalo na sa iyong mga affidavit dahil binago mo ang iyong affidavit. Siyempre, gusto nating makasiguro, lalong-lalo na sa mga pangyayari. Ah, sabi nga nila, recantations are generally looked upon with disfavor. But we're doing this, I'm clarifying this point, to ensure that your latest statement, as contained in your September 2 affidavit, could pass the credibility test. As the highest ranking official of your institution, you should know that a commander can delegate his authority, but not his responsibility. So, responsable po kayo, ah, Colonel Padilla, kung ano po 'yung nangyayari sa loob ng Bilibid. Ayon sa'yo, sometime in 2015, 2016, may mga nilipat na suspected Chinese drug lord mula sa Bilibid, papunta sa inyo sa Davao Prison. At ikaw ay, at ikaw ay nag-object dito, dahil wala kayong facility para sa mga high-profile inmates, katulad na lang no'ng mga Chinese drug lords. Again, Colonel Padilla, paralinawin po natin, sino po ba ang may authority na maglipat ng inmate mula sa Bilibid papunta sa Davao Prison?
The Director of Corrections po, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Sino po?
During the time, ah, it was ah... From ah, order po of ah, Director General of the ah, Bureau of Corrections, then General Ricardo Rinyer Cruz.
Pakilinawan po 'yung inyong pag-sasalita, sir?
Director General Rinyer Cruz po ang na-transfer sa Davao.
Covered po ba ito, sir, ng memo or any directive?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
So, may kasulatan po kayo ng transfer?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Colonel Padilla, hindi ba parang ito ay highly irregular? Normal po ba itong nangyayari from Bilibid, malilipat sa ibang facility?
That's why I oppose the transfer, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, with my letter during the time.
Ano po ang tingin niyo, bakit kaya, anong dahilan, kung bakit inilipat ito sa Davao?
Ah, hindi ko na po alam ang tamang dahilan. Ah, dahil ah, in fact, we have pending cases pa nga eh, appeared in their record.
Hindi po ba kaya siya inilipat sa Davao dahil mas kontrolado nila 'yung facility kesa sa Bilibid?
Maaring isa pong dahilan.
O dahil mas kontrolado nila kayo?
Hindi po, eh, kasi wala nga po kaming kamalay-malay na dadatnan kami ng ganitong high-risk and high-profile PDL.
Colonel Padilla, di ba siyempre pag ililipat mo 'yung isang tao from Bilibid to Davao, hindi ba kaya mo siya ililipat dahil mas kontrolado mo 'yung mga taong namumuno doon sa Davao Prison? Kaya ibig sabihin, mas kontrolado nila kayo, kaya mas pinili nila na doon ilipat 'yung mga nakakulong?
Ah, yes po, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, kasi ah, National Headquarters po namin 'yung ah, new Bilibid Prison.
Hindi po ba kayo nagduda rito?
Again, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ang sabi niyo po, Colonel Padilla, suspected, ibig sabihin 'yan, eh, hindi pa final and conviction, tama po ba, na sa inyong statement po yun?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
At nakakulong sila dahil non-billable 'yung offense?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
You describe them as high-profile inmates, bakit ganito ang classification siya sa kanila?
Ah, pagka 'yung ah, high-risk, ayun po 'yung mga notorious, and then 'yung high-profile, known mga, known, may mga known records ah, of ah, criminal activities talaga.
Kilala mo ba sila bago sila inilipat sa ano, from Bilibid to Davao Prison, kilala mo ba sila?
Hindi ko po kilala, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay, ah, Colonel Padilla, klaruhin din natin, Colonel Padilla, ah, sabi niyo, in 2016, three of the Chinese drug lords identified at Tu Kintin, Wong Mengpin, and Li Yan Yan, were killed by their fellow inmate, Mr. Magdado and Mr. Tan, tama po ba?
Yes, Your Honor.
Si Wong Mengping ay parehong kilala ni Tata at Andy, na si Peter Wong, tama po ba?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
At eto, at eto namang si Lin Lan Yan, ay parehong tao na kilala ni Tata at Andy, ah, na si Jackson Lee, tama po ba?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Sa madaling salita, wala tayong pagtatalo na ito mga pangalan na affidavit mo, ayun, ayun din 'yung pinatay ni Tata at ni Andy.
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Colonel Padilla, ayon sa affidavit mo, ah, katulad nga na sinabi ni um, Honorable Pimentel kanina, fighters at skilling, I've been subjected to an intense pressure by CIDG Officer Ruina Garma. Tinawagan siya ni ah, Ruina Garma. Bago ang pag-uusap ni niyo, kilala mo ba si Ruina Garma?
Kilala ko lang po siya bilang Deputy Chief ng CIDG, Davao City, Your Honor.
Sino ba ang mas, may tuturin mo mas senior sa inyong dalawa?
Hindi ko po, ah, hindi ko po masabi kung sinong mas senior sa amin.
Hindi mo masabi kung sinong mas senior sa inyo, pero ganun na lamang siya makapagsalita sa isang superintendent na katulad mo. Hindi ka ba nagtaka kung bakit ganyan kanya kausapin?
Magkaiba po kasi ang level namin sa BuCor at saka doon sa PNP, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
No'ng sinabi ni Garma sa'yo, 'yung mga salita na "may mga tao kami dyan at gagawa at huwag mo kwestionin, and whether you like it or not, we will operate and do not interfere, makamadami ang pamilya mo, so makipag-cooperate ka." So, anong ibig sabihin ng mag-cooperate sila? Ang ibig bang sabihin ito eh, may papatayin sila?
Meron po, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Nakatira ka ba sa Davao no'ng mga panahon na yun?
Yes po, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, even my family.
So, no'ng bang sinabi na yun na, sa iyong pagkakaintindi, meron ka bang ah, inkling o meron ka bang hula kung sino 'yung balak nilang patayan? No'ng panahon na yun, sa pakikipag-usap mo kay Ruina Garma?
Yun na pong tatlong Chinese nationals.
Si ano ba, si, itong si CIDG Officer Garma, ito ba 'yung kaparehas na si Ruina Garma na ni-inappoint ni Presidente Duterte, ah, para mag-head ng PCSO?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Colonel Padilla, ah, kilala mo ba si Presidente Duterte?
As a former mayor and president of ah, the country, Your Honor.
Personal, kilala mo ba siya?
No, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Nakita na ba kayo?
Hindi po nangyari, nakita na po kami.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Ah, Mr. Chairman, ah, Colonel Padilla, kasi may mga, may mga proof kami na magkasama kayo eh.
As a, no'ng mayor po siya, Your Honor, ah, Mr. Chair, may mga ah, 'yung mga kasal ganun, parang...
Oh, pero sinabi mo ko na yun, never met him, personally. Oh, binago mo na naman, how can we believe in your statement?
Hindi, during the itong ah, official...
Ang tanong sa'yo, well, in fact, that was also the question of Congressman, Congressman Brosas during the previous hearing. Tinanong kanya kung kilala mo si Presidente Duterte. Sabi mo po, sandali, patapusin muna ako, sa inabi mo na hindi. Kaya, you must tell all, you must be truthful to your statement.
Hindi ko po talaga kilala, Your Honor, may mga, during may mga question, ah, kasal, simple public picture ganuns in Davao City.
Meron kayo, meron kayong mga ano, pictures, meron kami. Mamaya pag sa panahon ko, ah, sana naman, sana naman sabihin mo na 'yan lahat ng totoo. Kasi eh, alam na namin 'yung buong story.
Ayan.
'Yung puzzle, buo na yun, o 'yan oh.
That was a taking ah, during ah, when he was a mayor in Davao City.
Anong circumstance, iba, pareho kayong ninong dyan, nagkumpare kayo? The happenstance sa Mal Island?
Hindi po, hindi po...
Saan yan?
Hindi po, sasamal po 'yan.
Oh.
Pero hindi po kami magkumpare ninong.
Oh, bakit pareho kay maylay?
Nag-attend lang po kami 'yan, kasi 'yung kinasal dyan, yun 'yung kaibigan ko, ah, Mike Ruiz. Pero personally, hindi, picture-taking lang po 'yan, as a public figure, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Anyway, darating din tayo dyan, mamaya, pag ako na, magtatanong sa'yo.
Okay, please proceed, Cong Konghun.
Ah, Colonel Padilla, mas maganda po sana kung magsasabi po tayo ng totoo, kasi ang pagkakasabi ko po, ang tanong ko po sa inyo, kung nagkita na kayo ni ah, dating Presidente Rodrigo Rova Duterte, ano na sagot mo, hindi? So, mas maganda po, magsabi po tayo ng totoo sa ating mga susunod na katanungan, ano po? So, lagi po nating iisipin na kayo po ay may sinumpaan dito at magsabi po tayo ng totoo. May continue, Mr. Chair?
Please proceed.
Colonel Padilla, sabi mo sa affidavit ni niyo, nakaranas ka ng intense pressure at totoo 'yung threat sa'yo, kasi, kasi alam mo, for a fact, "Operations made against a certain drug lord in Laiti days before she called me." Anong ibig mong sabihin dito sa iyong statement na yun?
Meron na pong nangyaring ah, same operation din, ah, involving ah, known ah, inmate, ah, drug lord in Laiti, a week before the Davao incident.
Papaano mo nalaman ito?
Isa po sa operating prison and penal form namin 'yung Abu Yug Laiti.
Okay. Ah... Colonel Padilla, sabi mo sa iyong ano, no, sabi mo sa iyong ah, statement, "I you became wary of your safety, of my safety, and I began to observe the personnel of Davao Penal Colony, among them were the people referred to by CIDG Karma." So, ang ibig mong sabihin, hindi mo alam kung kelan o papaano ang sinong mga kasama sa operation?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Wala kang alam dito?
Ah, yun, yun pong si ah, CIDG Karma. Ang alam kong ah, meron pong utak niyang operation na 'yan.
Pero kilala mo kung sino mga target?
Yes, Your Honor, 'yung three Chinese nationals.
At no'ng sinabi sa'yo ni Garma, 'yung ganun, ah, hindi ka ba humingi ng detalye sa kanya? No'ng pinag-usapan niyo kung sino 'yung mga target, ano 'yung detalye ang ibinigay niya sa'yo?
Basta yun lang po, 'yung three Chinese national na ah, subject nila, dahil ah, mga member po yun ang, ang ah, Bamboo Triad and ah, Sinalua Drug Cartel, operating in the country.
Bakit ganun ang kapangyarihan niyang si Garma, ni ano, ni Ruina Garma? Bakit ganun siya, ka-impluwensya, ka, 'yung kanyang kapangyarihan, bakit ganun?
Dahil ah, CIDG po siya ng Davao City. So, under po sa area ng operation nila 'yung ah, Davao, buong Davao.
Hindi ba dahil sa iyong palagay eh, kaya mo rin siya sinusunod at ah, hinahayaan mong kausapin kang ganun dahil ah, tingin mo ba nakarekta siya kay ano, Pangulong Rodrigo Rova Duterte?
Marahil, ganun, Your Honor, kasi naging mayor si Presidente Duterte. Ah, kahit na during the time na ah, siya ang Deputy CIDG and ah, naging, naging Station Commander pa po ng ah, isang presinto sa Davao City.
Can they wrap up, Congressman?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last question, Mr. Chair, pagkatapos ang usapan na yun, ni 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 Garma, hindi na ba kayo nag-usap ulit?
Wala na po, wala na pong nangyaring ah, kasunod pa na pag-uusap.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, I will, ano, na lang sa next round, Mr. Chair, ituloy kayong katanungan, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Konghun. The next to interpolate is Congressman Akop. Congressman Akop, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Padilla, dalawa po ang inyong affidavit, hindi po ba? Isang 27 ah, August at saka isang 2 September.
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Magkacontra.
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, binago ko po dahil...
So, ibig sabihin, nagsinungaling ka no'ng una, at sinumpaan mo yun?
Because of my...
Paano kami maniniwala ngayon sa'yo na totoo na 'yung pangalawa mong affidavit? Kung doon sa umpisa, una pa lang, nagsinungaling ka na?
Because of my personal safety, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Because of your personal safety, nagsinungaling ka?
Opo, ah, kasi...
Ngayon, gumawa ka ng second affidavit?
Hindi ko naman po akalain na...
Hindi, hindi, haya mo muna, patapusin mo muna ako. Gumawa ka ng second ah, affidavit mo, disregarding your personal safety eh, already. Tama po ba ang aking kaisipan?
Hindi ko po akalain na ah, hindi sa ah, hearing, ang pagkakalam ko pa, ko po is a true executive session.
Ah, ah, kasi, tama po 'yung sabi ni, ni Honorable Konghun, 'yung recantation ah, is not looked upon with favor by the courts. Kasi, 'yung nga'y sinabi ko, nagsinungaling ka na doon swa na, sinumpaan mo, tapos babaguhin mo, yun po yun. Ngayon, ah, umpisahan po natin, nailipat 'yung tatlong Chinese na PDL sa iyong lugar, kanino nanggaling 'yung utos?
From ah, Higher Headquarters po, Your Honor.
Ah, hindi ko naman, sino po doon sa Higher Headquarters na nag-utos?
'Yung Director of Corrections.
Sino po 'yung Director of Corrections na nag-utos, nailipat 'yung tatlo sa Davao Penal Colony?
Based on the record po, Your Honor, Director General, then Rinyer Cruz.
At sinabi mo rin na nag-object ka rito?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Do you have any piece of evidence would, that would show, o magpapakita na nag-object po kayo?
Yes, in fact, ah, it was ah, the first ah, letter which I opposed to the transfer dated July 27, 2015, and reiterate ko po ng October 2015.
Oh, sige, narinig ko na yun, sinunod mo kanina eh. Ah, tinatanong ko lang, kung meron po kayong evidencia, could you please submit to this committee, 'yung evidencia po na yun, na kayo po ay nag-object? Thank you. Ah, punta po tayo doon sa statement ni niyo na ah, "you were subjected to intense pressure by then CIDG Officer Ruina Garma, who called me through the cellphone of another inmate Fortaleza, at sinabi sa'yo ni ah, Madam Garma na may mga tao kami dyan na gagawa at huwag mo ng kwestionin, and whether you like it or not, we will operate and do not interfere, baka madami ang pamilya mo."
Yes, Your Honor.
Is that true?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Now, kung nakatanggap, kung natanggap mo itong mensaheng ito mula kay Colonel Karma, what would have been the proper thing that you would have done? Ano po dapat ang ginawa ninyo?
Hindi ko po, ah, hindi ko po actually, ah, binigyan ng kuwan 'yung kanyang sinabi, kumbaga...
Sinabi, hindi mo pinagbigyan pero sinabi mo, "You experienced intense pressure." Tapos, hindi mo binigyan ng kuwan?
During the time, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, nagkaroon po ng ganun.
Oo nga.
Kasi gusto nilang during the time, madaliin po 'yung, 'yung pagsasagawa nung...
Ano, pagsasagawa ng ano?
Pagpatay dun sa tatlong Chinese.
So, at that point in time, alam mo na napapatayin 'yung tatlo?
Alam ko po, Your Honor.
Oe, anong ginawa mo nga? Yun ang tanong ko nga eh, ano ang ginawa mo? Nung nalaman mo, napapatayin 'yung tatlo na sa loob ng iyong piitan? Marami kang paksi-sinungaling, Colonel eh.
Kasi nakakulong po yun. Hindi ko talaga akalain na mailalabas po dun sa pinagkulungan nila.
Merong ano?
Hindi ko po akalain na mailalabas po dahil nakasafekeeping po dun. Ako po ang nag-order na isafekeeping dyan.
Pero anti-mano, inamin mo na alam mo na napapatayin 'yung tatlo, pero wala kang ginawa.
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Hindi mo man lang ini-report, doon sa mga nakakataas, para tulungan ka, napatigilin o tigilin 'yung ganun, ano mangyayari?
Your Honor, Mr. Chair. Kaya nga, umihingi ako ng executive session kasi napakasalan po 'yung...
Sige. Let us see kung, ah, kuwan, pero akong unang, ah, magpapatigil nung executive session, kung 'yung sasahibihin mo ay hindi, ah, importante dito sa mga issue na inimbestigahan dito sa committee na ito?
It's very sensitive, Your Honor.
Maliwanan ko siguro yun. Ano? Ah, now, sinabi mo kanina na sa pagsagot po ninyo sa aking mga kasamahan, na merong unang pagtatangka. Tama po ba?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Sino, ah, paano mo nalaman na may unang pagtatangka?
Dun po sa tawag ni...
Tawag ni?
CIDG Karma.
So ibig mo sabihin, 'yung una eh, yun ang una?
Yun po.
Yun ang unang pagtatangka?
Opo.
So ano po 'yung, ah, nalaman po ninyo, 'yung pangalawa ng pagtatangka na sinabi po ninyo?
Wala naman pong, yun lang po, 'yung unang, ah, usapan lang po na yun.
So, kasi narinig ko kanina, merong first try eh, na sinabi mo sa katanungan ng aking mga kasamahan?
Opo.
So, wala na 'yung pangalawa? You na't you na?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. Ah... Doon po sa pagtatanong na aking mga kasamahan at pagsasagot ng mga ibang testigo, hindi ka pa ba naniniwala na may plano talaga na patayin 'yung tatlo?
Naniniwala nga po ako.
So naniniwala ka. Ang sinasabi mo lang, hindi ka kasama doon sa plano?
Naunahan po ako doon sa plano.
Ano ibig mong sabihin?
Naunahan po ako kasi...
Naunahan ka nino?
Eh, nung, nung pangyayari, kasi in-expect nila na ako ang unang kikilos.
Ah, iba naman 'yung impormasyon ko. Si, si Congressman Padwano na magtatanong sa'yo, hindi ikaw ang pipiit, isang tao na wala na rito sa mundo dahil din dyan sa okasyon na 'yan. Di ba?
Yes, Your Honor.
Ikaw, kasama ka sa plano, kasi walang mangyayari sa piitan na yun kung hindi mo alam o kung ayaw mo. Tama po ba?
Ganun po, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
May nangyayari sa piitan na hindi mo nalalaman?
Ganun po ang, ah, ah, nangyari.
O nangyari lang dito sa pangyayaring ito?
Opo, opo.
Okay. Ah, yun po 'yung inyong depensa. Yung, yung pong, ah, paggalugad, kanino pong utos talaga yun? Para magkaroon ng kasalanan, 'yung dalawang PDL para mabartolina sila? At anong, 'yung paggalugad din dun sa, sa foreign, ah, part ng inyong detention?
Yun po ang...
Sino po, ginalugad din po sila para sila mapunta sa Bartolina? Tama po? Sino nagutos nun?
Tulad ng sinabi ko po, meron po akong...
Tinatanong ko lang po kung sino ang nagutos?
Sa security operation po.
Security operation, sino po yun?
Ang security operation ko during the time is, ah, Robert Kinto.
Kinto? Tinuturo mo na dahil patay na siya?
Hindi po.
Di ba? Hindi nga, patay na siya, di ba?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, binaril din siya. Kaya huwag na tayo pumunta dun. Kasi kanina, ah, nung last hearing, sinabi ni Tignetti Furo na ang nagutos ng paggalugad doon sa mga, sa lugar ng, ah, mga inchik at saka 'yung dalawang PDL, kayo po ang tinuro. It's a matter of record, nandun po. Kaya, ginawa 'yung galugad na yun para magkaroon ng dahilan, para madala sila sa Bartolina, o ang saan sila papatayin. Kasi, ah, nandun din dun sa statement na sinabi nung dalawang nautusan na papatay na mahirapan sila dahil nandun sa ibang lugar, 'yung tatlong inchik, at nasa ibang lugar sila. Kaya ginawa ng paraan na mapupunta sila sa iisang lugar, sa Zelda number six ng Bartolina. Tapos, ah, inamin din ng iyong in-charge sa Bartolina, na punong-puno 'yung Bartolina, pero 'yung Zelda number six, dadalawalangan nandun. At dun din nala, 'yung tatlong inchik na pinatay. Kaya, kung tutusin kung ikaw ay investigador talaga, makikita mo na parang may plano. Di ba? Ikaw na rin nagsabi.
Meron po talaga.
Sabi mo na may plano.
Meron po talaga.
Yes. Kaya lang, ang sinasabi mo, hindi ka kasama sa plano, pero hindi naman mangyayari po ito kung tatanggihan niyo o hindi niyo papayagan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Akop. The next to interpolate is Congressman Padwano. You're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Anyway, ah, Mr. Chairman, eto lang po, ah, Colonel Padilla, kasi buo na po 'yung pasel, buo na namin po. Ngayon, we're just requesting you to tell the truth. Now, in my question, pag hindi mo kayang sagutin in public, you will just tell me na mag-executive, you will request for an executive session, okay?
Kaya nga po, ah, humihingi po ako ng, to, ah, for an, ah, executive session.
Kaya nga po, tanungin muna kita, just to establish the premise that indeed,
Di ba, Your Honor?
You can allow, you can be allowed to, for your request, okay? Ano lang po, premise lang?
Sige po.
Okay? Sabihin mo lang pag hindi mo masagot, okay? Executive session na lang, just in case, okay? Now, number one, ah, actually, Colonel Padilla, based on our investigation, alam namin, you're the most less corrupt in Dabaw Penal Colony. Alam po namin yun. Nacheck na po namin 'yung records. Nacheck na rin po namin 'yung mga statements coming from your peers during the time. For example, if I ask you, do you know Doctor Derla?
Yes.
Di ba? He was also ambus, but fortunately nabuhay.
Yes, Your Honor.
Tama? And the time he was assigned? Di ba? He was assigned in Dabaw Penal Colony?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Now, so alam mo yun? Alam mo rin siguro ang kwento dun. Alam mo, di ba? And can you commit to us that you will divulge the reason behind?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, second. Huwag na tayo, ito, actually, 'yung bagong ano mo, 'yung nine to, nine to eleven yun, mali to eh. Hindi totoo to eh. Hindi totoo 'yung paragraph nine ten eleven in your affidavit, hindi totoo po to. Kasi, if I ask you, kanina tinanong ka ni ano, ni Chairman Akop, PD guards sa galugad, mali na po, walang pakialam na si Kinto the time. Sinabi na po ni Furo na, at your orders, galuguhin maggaluga doon sa inchik at saka sa dalawang PDL. Establish na po yun. Now, sabi mo dito, during the time, off duty ka na nung nangyari, di ba? Tama? Okay. Now, if you are off duty, sino naka-duty during the time? Second, high ranking, kasi twenty-four-seven dapat 'yan, di ba, BuCor? Sa inyo, sino 'yung next? Who's your deputy?
Deputy po, supposed to be. In absence of a deputy...
No, no, ititanong ko ngayon sino? Sino 'yung nandun?
Commander of the guards po.
Eh, saan si Kinto during the time?
Wala po doon, ah, outside, ah, dahil nakatira po sa labas.
So wala siya?
Wala siya.
Wala rin siyang travel sa Manila during, official travel during the time?
Parang, ah, nagkaroon po ng, ah, parang may, ah, Wednesday siguro, Sabado po nung nangyari.
Yeah, August thirteen. Chinake na po eh, 'yung record eh. August thirteen, he was not during the week?
Yes.
Tama? Okay. Kaya 'yung statement po dito, na 'yung security for operation, blah blah blah, Robert Kinto, eh, patay na yun eh. Pero alam ko rin 'yung kwento dito, alam mo rin siguro?
Yes.
Okay. Next question. Is Doctor Derla and, ah, eto, sinabi ko na kanina, you're not, you're the most least, less corrupt. Eto, ah, with due respect, of course, to, to, ah, former Colonel, now, this is Kinto. Alam mo naman 'yung relasyon ni, ni Kinto, ni Derla sa tatlong Chinese, especially kay Tony Lim. Alam mo yun, di ba?
Yes, Your Honor.
Now, can you divulge it during the, ano, executive session?
Yes, Your Honor.
At least para lang po, ma-clear din natin 'yung pangalan ni Kinto with regards to that killing.
Kaya nga po, humihingi ako ng...
Eh, okay na, okay na. I just want to establish muna. Kaya nga, nung nakarang hearing pa, sinabi ko na na, alam mo po namin 'yung pasel? Tapos na po yun. Tapos na po yun. And well, in fact, siguro, I just want to confirm to you, during the first hearing, kaya hindi mo po masabi-sabi na tinawa, nakausap mo si Karma, because, alam mo, si Karma, her record dun sa Dabaw, di ba? As CIDG, as Chief Police Station, di ba? Very close to the president, di ba? Alam mo yun, di ba? Kaya, kaya medyo, wala kang choice.
Yes, that's true.
The same as true for all those persons involved in this particular plan. Tama?
Yes.
Okay. Now, so, do you commit? Sabihin mo na lahat, na hindi na ako magtatanong dun? Sabihin mo na na, you narrate na lang dun sa executive session po?
Yes.
Kasi gusto ko rin i-clear 'yung pangalan ni Deputy Superintendent Kinto with regards to what happened.
Yes, Your Honor.
Pero I will not clear his name with regards to his affiliation with the three Chinese. And, pwede nating, well, in fact, ala, kilala mo rin, si Macariola. Tama?
Yes, Your Honor.
Kilala ba? And do you confirm that Macariola is very close to classmate ni Kinto?
Yes, Your Honor.
Oh, di ba? Okay, tell all ka na dun. Ayaw pa. Ayaw, kasi as stated by Congressman Akop, pag hindi ka nagsabi ng totoo, eh, we will not, we will not, we will cut short your statement during the executive session.
Yes, Your Honor.
Tsaka po, marami pa po eh. May mga complication ka kasi, andami dito. Ah, for example, Inspector Glassey. Eto, si Glassey. Inspector Edgardo Mendoza. Chief Inspector Rocky, now assigned in Sablayan. Si Glassey nasa INBP ngayon, di ba? Tama?
Dabaw po.
Dabaw pa rin. Okay. Now, si Rocky is in Sablayan.
In Dabaw po.
In Dabaw pa rin. Tama. And marami pa po, mga names. Kasi we have already checked. Pero as, again, as I've stated, I hope you will say it all during the executive session. Kasi, again, let me stress, ikaw po, less corrupt ka dun sa loob ng ano po.
Thank you po.
Nakuha ko na po 'yung background mo. Kaya lang, I do believe na na-pressure ka lang, kaya tell all na. Tell all na kasi wala na eh. And you will be retiring by November, di ba? Tama? Kasi baka magpatong-patong pangkaso mo because of this. Okay? So, you commit na to this committee? Okay ha?
Yes po.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chairman. He has already committed, and let's see what will happen during the executive session. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Congressman Padwano. The next to interpolate is Congressman Benny Abante. You are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ah, magandang tanghali po, Superintendent Padilla. Marami lang na itanong sa inyo at, ah, ako'y nagpapasalamat sa inyong mga sagot. I hope that, ah, you're really honest enough today. Sapagkat, ah, sinabi nga po ni Congressman Akop na 'yung inyong unang affidavit na pinadala rito ay pawang kasinungalingan, no? At ngayong bagong affidavit ninyo, ay talagang sinasabi ni po ninyo, that you are now telling the truth and not in the truth. Ni Uba?
Yes po.
Oh, nabanggit po ninyo rito ang pag-uusap po ninyo ng CIDG Officer Ruina Karma. Ah, babanggitin ko uli ang pinag-usapan ninyo, ang sabi sa inyo na Chief Karma, and I quote, "May mga tao kami dyan, nagagawa at wag mo nang questionin. And whether you like it or not, we will operate and do not interfere. Baka madamay pa pamilya mo." Alam mo na si Congressman, si, ah, Colonel Karma ay babae, di ba?
Yes po.
Iminyo sabihin, nainiwala kayo na ang isang babae, pwedeng sabihin to sa inyo?
Hawak ko nilang...
Alright. Sinabi niyo, that you were, eh, nagkaroon kayo ng intense pressure. 'Yung intense pressure, ibig sabihin, natakot kayo, sinabi niya. Kayo ba ay nagkaroon ng intense pressure sa kanyan, sinabi, o sa isip ninyo, meron pang tao behind what Chief Karma said, at mas mataas po ito?
That's true.
You, you, hindi po kayo natakot dun sa sinabi ni Chief Karma eh. Kinabahan kayo sapagkat alam ninyo na meron mas malaking tao behind what Chief Karma said?
Yes po.
Kanina po, nabanggit ninyo, tinanong po kayo ng isang colleague namin dito about, ah, the former president. Binanggit niyo, mayor pa siya. Ano po, nung si Chief Karma ay naging commander ba sa Dabaw?
CIDG po.
Oh, therefore, ang binabanggit ninyo, eto, 'yung pong behind the big person, sa sinabi po ni Chief Karma, ay inyong ini-implicate ang ating pangulo, ang ating former president. Ganun po ba?
Hindi ko naman po in-implicate, pero hawak po sila ng mas mataas.
Okay, ibig sabihin yan, hawak po si Chief Karma ng mas mataas. At ang mas mataas dyan ay ang dating pangulo. Tama po ba ako?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Chair, yun lamang po, sapagkat atin narinig na binanggit po ni, ah, Superintendent, ah, Padilla na mas merong mas mataas, kaya siya natakot tungkol sa sinabi ni Chief Karma. Salamat po.
Thank you, Congressman Abante. The last to interpolate, ah, is our senior deputy speaker Dong Gonzalez. You are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ah, Colonel Padilla.
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair. Good morning.
Medyo nanginginig pa po 'yung kabay niyo ngayon o hindi na? Hindi na po, no? Last August twenty-eight, medyo hindi ka masyadong kalmandong. Ah, may tanong lang po ako sa inyo. Naniniwala ka na ngayon? Tinanong ko si Tata, na tumawag si, ah, Colonel Karma sa inyo at sabi mo, hindi mo nakausap. So, tinatanggap mo na ngayon na nag-usap kayo ni Colonel Karma?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair. In fact, ah, ah, hindi ko po sana, ah, nasagot nung previous, kasi I am, ah, ah, worried of my...
Safety.
Safety.
Salamat, ah, Colonel Padilla. Ngayon, ah, Colonel Padilla, meron na po akong hawak dito. na sinumpahang salaysay ni, ah, Ginong Leopoldo Tan, na naging subject ng nakaraang imbestigasyon nung April twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-four, sa page number, comsec, pwede po pakiaabot lang kay, ah, Colonel Padilla po ito? Colonel Padilla, 'yung pong, tatlo po 'yung nakabilog, gusto ko lang pong marinig ng, ng mga miyembro at mga nakikidig sa buong mundo. Pwede niyo pong basahin 'yung number twenty-eight?
Number twenty-eight?
Number twenty-eight po, sa salaysay ni Leopoldo Tan.
Habang naglalakad kami...
Paki-lapit po 'yung microphone.
Habang naglalakad kami papuntang investigation section, tumunog ang cellphone ni Superintendent Padilla. Nakita ko na pinindot ni Superintendent Padilla ang kanyang cellphone. Nadinig ko na sinabi nung tumawag kay Superintendent Padilla, congrats, Superintendent Padilla, job well done. Pero grabe 'yung ginawa mo ginawang tinuguan.
Medyo mahina po 'yung microphone, pakihulit lang po 'yung last sentence?
Pero grabe 'yung ginawa mo ginawa mong tinuguan.
Oh...
Twenty-nine, alam ko na...
Number twenty-nine, pakibasa po 'yung number twenty-nine.
Alam ko na ang kausap ni Superintendent Padilla ay si Presidente Duterte, dahil familiar ko ang boses niya.
At number thirty po, pakibasa 'yung number thirty.
Pagkatapos ng tawag, sabi ni Superintendent Padilla sa mga kasamahan niya doon, tumawag si Presidente, nag-congratsa akin. Dahil sa sinabing itun ni Superintendent Padilla, kaya lalo akong napaniwala na ang tumawag sa kanya ay si President Duterte.
Colonel Padilla, ngayon, nandito ko po, sa harap ng mga miyembro ng Kongreso, nasa harap ka po ng mga kapwa nating Pilipino nanonood, ang dami-daming nanonood sa atin, at maraming nanonood all over the country, all over the world. May tanong po ako sa inyo. Naniniwala po ba kayo sa sinabi ni Leopoldo Tan, sa number twenty-eight, twenty-nine, at thirty?
Mr. Chairman, ah, if I may?
Okay, Congressman Fernandez.
With the indulgence of, ah, senior deputy speaker, no, ah, I think, um, we're dealing, ah, deeply, ano, ah, with this discussion. And, ah, I'm just worried about the safety of Superintendent, um, Padilla. Considering that he is a sixty-four-year-old, ah, retiring in a couple of months, and at the same time, ah, his family lives in, ah, Dabao City. Ah, he's asking for an executive session, and he continually, continually insisting that he be given a chance on an executive session. Ah, we all know that the sensitivity of the issue that we are tackling right now, and it entails the life of the people that love this guy. Although, Mr. Chairman, ah, we have seen some inaccuracy on the new affidavits that, ah, the new affidavit that he submitted to us, but nevertheless, we cannot counter, no, 'yung buhay na maaaring mawala sa mga testimonyang ibibigay niya dito sa ating kapulungan. And, I think it is incumbent upon all of us to, ah, to think about the family of Superintendent, um, Padilla. Last hearing, I, ah, hardly questioned the Superintendent, um, Padilla, because I know that he was lying. And indeed, with the chains of affidavit that he subscribe right now, I think somehow he's telling the truth, but not completely, because there is an apprehension on his part. And considering the safety of his children and his family, I think it is, um, just proper for us to, ah, finally, ah, finally, ipagkalaw po natin sa kanya 'yung request niya doon po sa executive session. And, um, he divulges a lot of things, the name of, ah, Garma, the name of, ah, Edilberto Leonardo, nabanggit kanina, the former president as well. And, um, I think, Mr. Chairman, this is high time that, ah, pagbigyan po natin si, ah, Superintendent, ah, Padilla. And if I may, no, Mr. Chair, ah, kasi you, you, you are reading a lot of documents. Those documents that you are, you are reading right now pertains to what, ah, Superintendent Padilla?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Tungkol po saan 'yung mga dokumentong 'yan?
'Yung, ito po 'yung logbook ng chief commander during the event.
Can you kindly submit that to us? Can, can we have that, ah, documents?
Ah, yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay, sige, thank you so much, and, and with that, ah, Mr. Chairman, ah, I move that, ah, we convene our, um, quad comm into an executive session.
Before the chair rules on that, ah, on that motion by Congressman Dan Fernandez, ah, allow the chair to recognize our deputy speaker, ah, Robbie Puno, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, ah, to edify this representation, Mr. Chairman. Ah, in the issue of, a, a, in the consideration of a request for a, an executive session, may I inquire, what are the criteria for deciding whether we do or do not, ah, grant this request? Is it completely at the discretion of, or, and a, subject to a vote by the body? Or is there, do we consider personal safety? Do we consider national security, what, or other factors? May, may I please, ah, ask the chair for clarification on that issue?
Well, ah, in reply to Congressman Robbie Puno, if the committee, this is section thirty-seven of our rules, no, it says that if the committee, on the sixth paragraph, section thirty-seven, regular and special meetings, if the committee or subcommittee deems that the subject matter of the discussion in a public hearing may endanger national security, or may be offensive to decency or public morals, it shall conduct the meeting in an executive session. In our case, ah, the parliamentary status is that Congressman Dan Fernandez made a motion to convert this hearing into an executive session. Earlier, there was a manifestation by Congressman Keith Flores and Congressman, ah, ah, Abante, objecting to the request that we grant executive session to, ah, Colonel Padilla. So, since there are objections, ah, and the motion is, ah, proper at the moment, then, ah, let us, ah, vote on the motion of, ah...
Mr. Chairman.
Congressman.
Mr. Chair. If I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman, because prior to, ah, the, the motion that I manifested a while ago, ah, the objection of Congressman, ah, Keith Flores and the chairman, ah, Abante, ah, there was not, there were no proper motion that was, ah, moved by, ah, the two of them. They have manifested their objection on having a executive session in relation to the letter that was given to us by, ah, Superintendent Padilla. So, I think the proper objection must be done on the motion that I have, ah, manifested on this quad comm, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ah, okay, Congressman Abante.
I think there was a motion made by Congressman Keith Flores. Now, I'd like to explain my objection, Mr. Chair, no?
Okay, um, there is a motion by Congressman Dan Fernandez to convert this hearing into an executive session. Ah, earlier, there was a manifestation made by Congressman Keith Flores as an objection to that request of Colonel Padilla, and which was also, ah, ah, stated by Congressman Benny Abante, ah, objecting to the same, ah, request. Now, ah, since we want to decide this collectively as a body, we would like to give both the members of, ah, this committee who objected and state for the record the reason why they objected to, in the motion to grant executive session to Colonel Padilla. So, we would like to hear the objection first of Congressman Abante and then Congressman Keith Flores. Congressman Abante, you are recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair, with due respect to my co-chair, Dan Fernandez, I objected because, number one, ah, Superintendent Padilla already made it public, and he has answered many questions already, as far as his, ah, affidavit is concerned. And number two, Mr. Chair, he has already actually implicated the former president by my questions, Mr. Chair, on the issue of the killing of the three Chinese drug lords. 'Yun lamang po ang gusto ko sabihin, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Abante, Congressman Flores, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, in light of the manifestation of Chairman Dan Fernandez, I will give, ah, Colonel Padilla a chance, Mr. Chair, to answer questions which he thinks, ah, should only be disclosed during an executive session.
Thank you, Congressman Flores, so now, we will now rule on the motion of Congressman Dan Fernandez.
Mr. Chair, can I ask for a one-minute suspension, please?
On the question raised by Congressman Robbie Puno, ah, does the gentleman from Antipolo, ah, is satisfied with the reply of the chair?
Ah, just a further clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Please proceed.
The, the response that I hear from the chairman seems to suggest that the, the position taken by the Colonel, by Colonel Padilla has been that it is for his personal safety that he wants the, an executive session. And according to the rules that you have stated, Mr. Chairman, that's not one of the criteria for granting an executive session.
But, ah, among, among others, ah, the reason that Colonel Padilla cited is the safety, his personal safety and his family's safety. Now, we will grant him an executive session, listen to his revelation, and we will decide whether indeed the session that we will have with him is, ah, ah, an executive session where we cannot disclose to the public what we discussed in this, ah, executive session. So it is still up to the committee, ah, to whether we will make public the disclosure or the revelation that will be made by Colonel Padilla in our executive session.
That's ve, that's clear, very clear, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Congressman Puno.
Mr. Chair, may I ask for a one-minute suspension, please?
One-minute suspension. Hearing is assumed.
Mr. Chair.
Congressman, ah, SDS Dong Gonzalez first, and then Congressman, ah, Benny Abante. SDS Gonzalez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For all those reasons, I will now give way, I will stop my line of questioning to Colonel Padilla to give way for the executive session.
Thank you, thank you, Congressman Gonzalez, yes, Congressman Abante.
In respect to my good friend who will become the governor of Laguna, ah, I accede to the, ah, ah, to the request of the comm to give Superintendent Padilla an executive session, thank you.
Okay, so... There is a motion to convert this hearing into an executive session. Julie seconded, are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. At this point, we'd like to ask everyone who are not members of the House of Representatives to please proceed outside, we will call you back after we, we finish the executive session, including the media. Okay? Please, ah...
Paki-turn off po 'yung camera, ha, please?
Bring your cameras outside, and no, no other personnel in this room except the members of the House of Representatives and the secretariat. Okay, all pages, please, make sure that the resource persons are out, please enjoy, ah... There's lunch to be served outside, may lunch tayo, no, page? Okay, lunch have been served, okay, sa baba, so please, ah, we will call you back.
Dun sa, sa plan? Nung huli, hindi, dito po, dito. Dito sa, di ba po may attendance tayo, Chairman? Hindi po ako nai, nai-present dito, tinapos ko 'yung hearing last, ah, quad hearing.
Can you? Can you please, ah, inform the committee on rules that Congressman Lara was present, ah, in the last hearing? Okay, secretariat, labas muna, ah, sorry, hindi pala secretariat, sorry, maiwan lang 'yung mga comsec's, okay, mga comsec's lang, the rest, please? Tsaka one stenographer lang. Oh, technical, merong ano, ah, there's no video, pero naririnig pa rin 'yung ating usapan, taki, ano lang, kasi I think live streaming tayo, diba? So, 'yung live stream siguro, can we, oh, can we temporarily turn off the volume and the audio and the video of our live streaming? Lagyan niyo na lang, executive session, 'yan, 'yan pala. 'yan. Hello, can, 'yan. Okay, so...